So which comes first, chicken or the egg? We're gonna have a call meeting and a work session.
Good afternoon, everyone. Whoop. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the special call city council meeting this March the 1st, 2018. It is 3:02 PM. I'll call this meeting to order. We have one item on our agenda for the first meeting, and ladies and gentlemen, you have that before you now. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the agenda as written?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor? We are in order. First part of the meeting is public comment. Anyone wishing to give a public comment, please do so at this time. Come forward, state your name and record for the, I mean, name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Not everybody at once. Seeing none? Tab A, charter review. David?
Mr. Mayor, I was the one who asked to have this special call meeting set up today on the chance that we got back the comments from the Legislative Council on our proposed charter. On Monday, I was contacted by her, and she told me that she believed that there needed to be some technical changes made in our draft that we had sent to them. She gave me a listing of the items that she believed needed some changes and said she was gonna go ahead and make them. None of them seemed to be substantive in nature, but the reason I had asked for this meeting to be set down is in the event that we got back a completed draft from her, I wanted to get it in front of you so you could look at it. But as of when I left my office a little while ago, we still had not gotten it in. I did get a comment from her saying that because yesterday, she said yesterday was crossover day, that she'd been very busy on a number of bills and that she expected she'd have ours completed by Friday or Monday. So I don't have the final draft. I gave you an example, I think, of some of the types of changes that she was talking about and can go over those if you want to, but I don't think it's changing any of the meeting or the substantive part of our draft.
I do think it's important, those that may be watching on TV, that you just mention those briefly, just give us a...
Sure. Yeah, I'll just go through the main points that she made in an email back to me. She said that there were three different sections in the draft that dealt with the corporate boundaries of Villarica. We're reducing that back down to just one section setting forth what the boundaries are, and we are actually attaching the current world map of the city to show what the corporate boundaries are. She asked a question on if the city was being led by the mayor pro tem, if the mayor was, had either vacated the office or was temporarily unavailable to serve, who would break a tie? And my response back to her was if we were operating one short so that we just had six people instead of seven onboard, that we'd just have a tie. And that there wouldn't be a tie to be broken at that point if there were just six people present.
You mean five instead of six?
Well, a total of six. Let's say that the mayor was, you know, like last year when we didn't have a mayor and we had a mayor pro tem filling it so that we would've had, we would've just had five then, okay. So we would've had a tie broken.
Yeah.
But, um... Yeah, if you had two out...
We'd have to have one.
You'd have four people, and you'd just have a tie, which is the exact situation we had last year. But I don't know that there's any way for us to designate a tiebreaker if you only have four people present. Let's see. She asked a question that wasn't, she believed was not clear, is that in the event that the mayor pro tem was in charge, you know, would the mayor pro tem have the authority to sign contracts? And I told her I believe that yes, they did, but, you know, if she wanted to add something in there to make that very clear, that was fine. In the course of that, we also, I had a discussion with her, and I believe that she is gonna make this clear, that the council will have the authority to designate somebody besides the mayor to sign a contract. That's been our practice for a long time to, sometimes you authorize the city manager to sign a contract. Or assume the situation where, it... Assume you have a situation where the council, by a five-to-o vote, has taken some sort of an action. The mayor vetoes it, the council overrides the veto, and it comes back to the mayor to sign the document, and the mayor says, "I'm not signing it." That's essentially a second opportunity to veto something by just saying, "I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sign the contract." There needs to be a provision in there, and I believe she will add it in, that will make it clear that the council does have the ability to authorize someone other than the mayor to sign a document if necessary. So that if, in that situation I just gave, the mayor said, "I'm not signing it, I don't care what you say."
I believe that actually happened.
The council can say, "Well, okay, fine, we're authorizing..."
Not here.
Somebody else to sign on behalf of the city. So that will be in there. There were three separate sections, or three separate subsections under the powers of the council that dealt with the ability to enact building codes, to enact zoning provisions, and she said she was gonna combine all those three similar powers into one provision so that we didn't say the same thing three different times. She mentioned that in our charter where we created the municipal court, that we did not have a specific statement as to how our municipal judge would be appointed. And so there's gonna be a reference added that the municipal judge would be appointed pursuant to state law. Here's something that, in subsection 32 of the powers of the council, there was a statement that we would have the ability to, that the council would have the ability to prohibit the playing of lotteries in the city. And she said that, in one regard, that that was contrary to state law in that the state itself sponsors a lottery to fund the Hope Scholarship, and that we would not ever have the power as a city to outlaw the playing of the Georgia Lottery here in the city of Villarica. Which, again, I don't think that's something we ever assumed we had, but she said she was gonna make that clear. We had a provision in there that said that any delinquent property taxes, any liens that we put on property as a result of delinquent property taxes would be of the same or equal footing as any other tax liens on the property. And she correctly pointed out that pursuant to general state law, the delinquent taxes owed to the state and to the county are superior to city liens for taxes. So she was gonna correct that. And that's all. So those, you'll see those changes when we get it back.
My point, I guess, is that that was a lot more than we thought. That was certainly a lot more than what you sent in the email.
Right.
I would like to see the whole document, again, revised before we move forward on it.
Yeah, you'll get it the moment that I get it.
I appreciate it.
And, you know, whether or not you deem it necessary to call another special meeting just to give your blessing on those changes, that'll be a decision for y'all to make as to whether or not you wanna... I'm hearing that you wanna do it no matter what, and that's fine.
Is it gonna continue on in the legislature?
Yes, it is, it is in process. Representative Collins is pushing it. I mean, he's, he's been aggressively urging her to get this completed. We did just get back the affidavits from the newspapers yesterday that enables us to get it submitted, and I've checked several times to make sure that we're not falling behind so that it won't make it, and I've been assured that there's still plenty of time.
When you speak of her, who is that?
Her name is Lori Brill, D-R-I-L-L. She's been very responsive, very helpful. She is a, works within the office of the Legislative Council. Whenever a bill comes in, they route everything through their lawyers and the legislature to make sure that they don't see any problems with it.
Any other questions for council? Okay. That being the only item on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion and second to adjourn. All in favor? We are adjourned. And now, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the mayor and council work session for this March 1st, 2018 date, and the time is 3:12 PM. And I will call this meeting to order officially.
I guess I will.
Where's he at? Told ya. Never mind. Never mind what I told you. Okay. Tab B, we've got a presentation from, ma'am, I'm gonna mess your last name up, I'm sorry, Sean. Five?
Five.
Okay. Please come forward. Like what? Gotcha.
Well, thank you all for allowing me to come talk to you this morning. And in an effort for us, for Keep Carroll Beautiful to partner more with the city of Villarica, we have scheduled three recycling events in Villarica this year, which are tire recycling will be March 17th at the V-Plex. We have electronics recycling scheduled for April 14th, and that will be at First Baptist Church. And then later in the year, August 18th, we have household hazardous waste and paint, which will be at the V-Plex. This is the list of all of our events for 2018 that we have scheduled. These events would also be a great opportunity for Villarica to show support for Keep Carroll Beautiful. If you're able to sponsor these events, I wanted to let you know the cost of each of these. For the tire recycling event, it's $600, and electronics and household hazardous waste and the paint are $1,000 each. We've also recently done, we received a grant for bins, event recycling containers, that would be great to be placed out at events at the AMP. I spoke with Janet at Main Street about giving these bins to Main Street to house there. She said that six bins would be a good amount there, and for the first year, we would just need to weigh the recycling for the reporting for the grant, but other than that, they're yours to keep, to use for collecting recycling at the AMP or wherever you want. We have 50 bins, so if there are other places you think that could use some bins, we have those to give out as well. We just completed our litter index last week, and the score has stayed the same. So that, what the litter index is, is a survey of the litter on roadside, and we pick 10 miles in each district throughout the county to survey the litter. It's still, we've seen a lot of litter in Villarica, and it's stayed about the same, but I did make note of a lot of those roads, and will get volunteers to clean those up as well as give it to the sheriff's office to help clean up those roads, and hopefully we can improve that score next year. And if anybody has, oh, we also have some volunteers that are willing to come out to Villarica, mostly from the University of West Georgia, but they're wanting to do beautification projects. So if anybody has ideas on projects, or they need painting done, or planting, or things like that, I have volunteers that are willing to come out here and help with that. And of course, if anybody has any other ideas on how we can partner more, help Villarica, we are more than willing to come out here and do that. I know that when Josh and I came out here last time, we were letting you know that we have opportunities for board member from Villarica to come join our board, and we would still really love to have the city's support in that capacity to help us in planning and everything that we have going on. So if anybody is interested, please reach out to me and let me know. But this is pretty much what I wanted to present to you on everything that we have going on, and again, please reach out to me if you have any ideas, I'd love to help out.
I've got a great idea.
Yes.
And Tom, would you look into this? We have planters at each of our parks, and it's hard for our staff to keep the grass cut, quite frankly, during the summer when it's really going 90 miles an hour, so that may be something we could, if you've got some folks that wanna volunteer, the planters are there, the soils there. We just have a hard time putting seasonal flowers twice a year for the springtime and then for the fall, so...
And where's, where at?
At all the parks in Villarica. Each one, each one of our park entrance signs has a little planter built into it, and I think that would be a good idea if we could do that, so...
You said about twice a year would be good?
Ma'am?
You said about twice a year would be good?
Yeah, for the spring seasons, and then for summer flowers, and then in the fall.
Okay. I can definitely look into that. Any other questions?
Yeah, what's a bin? What's a bin?
So the event recycling containers, is that what you're referring to? It's actually, it's like the curb side roll-off bins, it's about the same size, except the top is triangular and has two holes for cans and plastic bottles and things of that nature.
How exactly do you do that measuring of the trash? I mean, I drive down the road, obviously, and go, "That's a lot of trash! Where'd all that come from?" But I know you'll have some sort of...
We do. So it's a score from one to four, one being no litter at all, and four being wrecked. And we do like a training before we send volunteers out to score this, on how to score each piece, or each mile that we go down. So two would be some mild litter, three is you see it sporadically, and four is just, it's horrible. With the houses being bad, a lot of just unsightly litter on the roads, tire, scrap tire piles and things like that.
Yeah, 'cause I drive around, I'm appalled at what people throw out, just appalled that they, you know, just discard things out the window, including entire garbage bags that I don't know fall out of the back of their pickup truck or what. One more, just real quick. Would you mention the cost of sponsoring those events? The tire recycling was...
$600.
Okay, I got that one.
Electronics is $1,000.
Okay.
And then the household hazardous waste and paint is $1,000.
Okay, thank you.
Would you give those dates again, please? I missed them.
Tires, the tire recycling is March 17th.
Okay.
It's on the back side.
It's on the back, but the three that will be here in Villarica are March 17th, electronics is April 14th, and the August 18th is the household hazardous waste and paint.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Tab C, review of the agenda. I have some items I wanna talk about during the governing body portion, but...
I've got one I'd like to add to the governing body.
Okay.
Me too.
City manager evaluation. Can we make that number three?
We can. Okay. Councilman?
You had recently, okay, you had recently assigned the mayor's committees, the ones you appoint, and I just wanna get a little bit of a feel on what your expectation is for those committees, 'cause I have not been on recreation before. We're both on library, we tend to go when we can, but I'd like to get an idea of what you're looking for in those committees.
I've got something along those lines I'm gonna talk about, and we'll just, we'll talk about both of those. Anybody else?
Chief Mansour has an item that he'd like you to consider. I believe it's Public Defender that's going vacant, and he'd like you to consider approving a replacement. So that would be number three, and...
Anybody else?
Let me just ask, are these microphones on?
They don't sound like it, do they, from our stuff?
They're all here. 'Cause I missed the last work session, and sitting at home trying to watch this, I can tell you it's very difficult to do. And when I can't even hear it, here, I'm not even sure. Nobody's texting. Doesn't seem like they're on.
Normally, I can hear feedback, and I don't hear it this time. I don't wanna ask y'all to talk.
Well, all of us can't take cruises every month.
Thank you, Verlun. Those of us who can, however, would like to be able to hear it.
Okay, moving right along. Tab C, I mean, tab D, governing body. If y'all will indulge me, I've got a few that I would like to add, and then we'll get to, or we'll just go through the order here, however y'all wanna do it. We can go through one, two, and three, and then I'll add nine at the end, whichever y'all wanna do.
Yep. So everything was under governing body?
Yep.
And four, five, six, and seven years.
First thing I would like to mention is we are indeed blessed in our community to have a fine school system, and in that fine school system, we have a girls' basketball, young ladies' basketball team that has made it to the Final Four in the state of Georgia for the first time, I believe, in the, in the school's history. 65 years. It's 1965. Who said that? So since 1965, and I'm very proud of these young ladies, and they'll be playing this coming Saturday in Fort Valley. So they're gonna have a send-off at 8 o'clock at the high school this coming Saturday. So for those of you that can be there, it would be good to, hopefully the community will show up and escort these young ladies to victory, and very proud of them. Along those same lines, with the council's indulgence, I have asked... What time is the game?
Senate.
Eight o'clock. Eight o'clock at the high school.
AM, okay.
AM. Along those lines, I've asked the principal at Villarica High School, Glenn Harding, to make arrangements to have those two teams, not only the girls, but the boys also did well this year, made it into the second round of the playoffs, I believe. And so I have asked that they both, both of those teams and parents and coaches be at our April meeting. I would've done it at this meeting, but our girls are still winning, so we wanna give them a chance, and hopefully we'll be crowning a champion here in Villarica. So with the council's indulgence, we'll do that at the April meeting. Second thing that I wanna talk about, and I've talked to some of you individually about this, is the growing traffic problem in Villarica. And when I moved here in 98, I never thought I'd be coming to a council meeting and talking about a traffic problem, coming from Cobb County, in particular Smyrna. But we have a serious traffic problem, and it's getting worse every day. Not made any easier by Norfolk Southern and everything else that's been going on, but I feel like we're at a point where we need to make some decisions here pretty quick. And I've talked to the city manager, and I would like to, for us to discuss the possibility of installing traffic lights at two locations, at the intersection of Funkytown Road and Highway 61, and Industrial Boulevard and Highway 101 Rockmark Road. Now, I realize that with the bypass, which may or may not happen in the next century coming up, that, you know, that would be something that could be temporary, and I hope that's the case, quite frankly. But I don't know that we can wait another three or four years for something to happen with that bypass. So I think that's two issues that we need to address here fairly quick, and I would at least like to get a cost. I have asked Representative Collins to help me with that endeavor with GDOT, since both of those are state highways, but I would like the council to help make this possible and to direct our city manager to start putting together some information on that.
Can I ask you a question, since you just mentioned North Bypass? Collins and our senator were supposed to meet last week with GDOT. Did you get any feedback?
Yeah, I will, Tom, if you'll address that one.
The only concession that we've received so far is the planning office with GDOT has changed the construction funded date from 2027 to 2024, which in our case is effectively the same thing, so... That was their immediate response. We need it to be 2020, or even better, 2019, and it needs to happen now so that the environmental permitting and some of the other processes can continue so that they all finish at the same time.
How do we make that happen?
Working with the GDOT planning office. That's who Senator Deegan is talking to.
They're still working with him.
Having a strategy for applying any pressure tactics we can come up with, and trying to think of a few, I mean, you know, that's legal, but I'm serious, it's not right. It's not right, what they've done, and it needs to be addressed, and they need to hear from us. I just don't know the best way to carry that out.
Well, not to diminish that at all, and that needs to continue, and I'm glad to hear you say it is continuing, but along the lines of the traffic lights, there's no question that traffic is, I mean, just in the last couple of years, it has gotten significantly worse, worse than a number of places, and you're right, the train doesn't help. But I would say that it needs to be looked at, if we're gonna look at those two, at least look at where we think we really have serious problem issues, and one of the places is when the traffic is blocked on Connor's Road by the train, even if we had a signal that kept people from traveling down that road unnecessarily and doing a U-turn and coming back, which we have in process, it creates a great deal more traffic going over Flyover Bridge and trying to make that left on that. And I see every day cars come very close to getting hit because they try to scoot across or they try to pull out in front of other folks. Something has to be done there, because that will be a serious accident. The other two locations are, you know, they're backed up significantly, but at least I don't see people pulling out in front of each other and causing a hazard issue at those locations. So in looking at those two, I'd like to at least look at that one as well.
I agree. And this is a chief question, and it's been asking me three or four times, so I'm gonna ask the city manager to find out on this, you know. The other day, my wife came through the intersection from school in Temple, and there was a Carroll County deputy directing traffic at the end of Industrial Boulevard and 101 Rockmark Road, and I didn't think, that's nothing we asked for, was it, chief? Is that even, are they supposed to be, supposed to be at the end of Industrial Boulevard, Highway 101 Rockmark Road, they were directing traffic? Okay. I had to get with her, it's been about a week ago. But along those lines, the reason I say that is, is what would be the impact of putting a police officer at both of those intersections in the, especially in the afternoon, but perhaps in the morning? And that's a question, that's not a directive, obviously. But can you maybe address that next Tuesday or now, if you want to, it doesn't matter?
Oh, hold on, just saying, gee, hold on, chief, just saying, if you wouldn't mind, if you're gonna talk, if you would come to a microphone. I can hear you fine, but again, I'm...
If you're watching the meeting, you can't.
You can't, and when I go back and review these, I won't hear anything he says.
We'll give him his own mic.
Yeah, maybe he could hold his own mic out there when we're doing this together. Exactly.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Isn't that a commercial?
Yeah.
So obviously, it's a, it's something that we can look at and study, but the question is, is can I guarantee you somebody there every day? No, there's no way I can do that with the manpower that we have and the call volumes that we have. Is it something that we could do as a, use part timers, possibly, if we can get the people to do that? But it would be very difficult to guarantee somebody there every day, there's just not But it would be very difficult to guarantee somebody there every day. That's just not realistic.
And that was the answer I gave, but the part-time question I hadn't thought about. Would y'all look at that, Tom and chief, and just see if that's... I mean, to me, you know, that could be too, a short-term solution. If we can get even a part-time officer to, because it's not so much... That's why I think the roundabouts are gonna be important because it's not so much that if someone were there to direct the traffic, especially backed up on 61, it stacks probably halfway down the hill on Punkett Town Road, but it stacks all the way into Paulding County, going west toward Dallas and then, you know, past the hospital some afternoons, going toward Dallas. So, you know, I think, I think an officer, even part-time, as long as they're legal, obviously, to direct traffic.
I mean, the thing is, when you have that much volume, even them out there is still gonna be hard. It's still gonna have a lot of folks coming through there and all, but definitely can try. The only other concern about the part-timer is it's gotta be worth their while before they're gonna want to come out and direct traffic for 30 minutes or an hour. So we're gonna have to guarantee them a couple hours or three hours.
Well, I know it'll be more than an hour, but I think it'll be more than an hour based on my, you know, experience coming through those intersections. But at least can we look at that? You know, I think that gives us two short-term solutions. The shortest term being, you know, possibility of officers being there to help direct traffic. But the more permanent solution, if that is what we want to call it until the roundabouts go in, is a traffic light at those locations and then the one that Councilman McDougal added. So will y'all look at that and maybe come back? Do you think you could do that by next Tuesday? Give us an idea?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Now, this is the Punkett Town Road intersection and there was no roundabout.
Do we still have a traffic unit? Yes, sir. We do.
Does it make any difference when, and of course, maybe traffic's lighter then? I know when we get our resource officers from the schools, when they're not in school, does that help at all with something like this?
Well, it doesn't in the afternoon because their hours are different. Usually, the resource officers are early morning until mid-afternoon. But, you know, we can stagger some during the summer and try to help out on that, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
The next thing I want to just, I'm gonna continue to put this on here, is the crosswalk at Spring Street and, I mean, Wilson Street and South Carroll Road. And two more things that I'm gonna talk about, well, one of them I can bring up now.
Wait a minute, before you leave, that one, we had discussed taking away that reverse angle parking on Wilson at that intersection to the west of there. Are we gonna do anything about that? You know, we right now have a reverse angle parking.
Yeah, Bobby's working on that.
Okay. So we talked about changing that back.
Yeah, the one-way.
Mayor members of the council met with the business owners today to get their idea of what kind of impact it's having on their business. So I will be working in the next couple of weeks to get something ready for y'all. We got paving starting Monday. West Wilson is number 16 on our paving list, priority, the route they're gonna take. Of course, there's gonna be a little, a little wait time between finishing paving and being able to put thermoplastic striping down. But I'm about three weeks behind on making contact and getting on that, but we started today, so.
Bobby, let me ask you a question. Is, is this reverse angle parking issue on South Wilson, does this have any impact on the delay with getting this crosswalk painted out there? Because I've been hearing about this for a long time.
No, sir. The, I think the crosswalk is supposed to be put back by H-E-H.
Sounds right.
Paving.
But it hasn't been.
The weather's been, they've been able to do some repairs on South Carroll, but the weather's just been crazy. So we're staying on the case about it.
All right. In that vein, how do you feel like that's, that's going with H-E-H? I haven't had an update on that in probably two months.
I do know that they've, they've worked on the taper at the bridge. It's a, it's a whole lot better than it was.
They did that Friday, I think.
Yeah, they did that last Friday. They've done a couple, I'll say a couple, maybe a half dozen of the driveway transitions. And they've gone in and tried to repair some of the, what we call bird baths for water, pockets of water standing. It's a hard thing to repair. Now, you look like you have a patched street. But they've still got a lot to do to finish that up.
How do you feel like that process is going, though? Are we a priority? Is it being handled in a timely way? It doesn't sound like it to me, and maybe it's a David question. I just haven't been updated on this in a while.
Yeah, well, you know, and I don't want to, I don't want to speak on the contractor's behalf, but the weather over the last six weeks has been horrible to do any kind of asphalt work. You've gotta have 55 degrees or better to do any kind of hot mix asphalt work. And it's, we've had so much rain and all. I would think that they're, they're moving forward with it. I mean, they could move faster when they got good weather, but I don't really know what their resources are from a construction company. I mean, they're certainly not CW Matthews with that kind of, you know, resource, but we're staying on.
Okay.
That crosswalk has nothing to do with bad weather. And they're finished with that section of the road. H-E-H has no more work to do at that intersection. So I have been asking for a while and I've been getting a lot of complaints from the business owners and the public. So I would like to see that, that crosswalk put in.
I was standing in that, where that crosswalk is today, and it's definitely needed big time.
Well, and some of the feedback I got, and I'll wait for your report in two or three weeks or whenever you're gonna bring it, a month. Some of the feedback I got is that that reverse angle parking had at least reduced the traffic accidents at that intersection. I'm not defending it. I'm just saying, I'll wait for your report. But that is, I think the crosswalk would help as well, so I'd like to see that done sooner rather than later.
It was my understanding that it was the one-way street that actually reduced the accident rate, not the reverse angle.
It's a little more complicated in that we have parking on South Carroll up that side in front of the chiropractor and up to the corner with the two-way traffic. If you're, if you're coming out West Wilson onto South Carroll with cars parked there, you can't see anything.
Right.
Well, that crosswalk is even more important because it's in between where you're sitting in a car and where it is. So I will, I will be presenting three options probably on what we, you know, to get that put back. I met with, it was almost a 50-50 split today about who's, who wants it back the way it was, who likes it the way it is, depending on where you are in the block.
That makes sense to me because if you have regular angle parking, it changes the visibility of people who are traveling in this direction.
Exactly.
So that was also an issue with the safety. But I appreciate the report and I appreciate you working on that.
Are we planning on keeping the one-way street?
I think that would be part of the whole.
Not last, I think we weren't.
One of the options.
I did some preliminary measuring today and with the new development standards that I'm gonna be passing each one of you out tonight to take home with you to start looking at, looking over. The aisle width on that street between the parallel parking on one side, on the south side, and the angle parking, whether it be the direction it is or turned.
Yeah.
You need 24 feet of aisle width to get two-way traffic, and I just don't think we can do that.
So we're gonna keep it one-way?
It's probably gonna be at a 20-foot span. That's just not enough. You know, I'm probably gonna recommend that we keep it one-way.
It was my understanding that it was actually the one-way street that reduced the accident rate.
Well, it's, it's the folks coming out from the other direction onto South Carroll with a visibility problem. It's where all the accidents were happening. Because before you know it, you're in the intersection and you're getting hit by a coming car.
Okay.
Are we gonna be able to make that crosswalk a raised crosswalk with a stop for pedestrian sign in the middle?
Right now, we're just trying to get some paint out there.
I know. Can that come later without being major expense? Or are you going over something you already, I know we need the crosswalk, but I had left that with you. I just wanna... I'm gonna, I just wanna hound it.
I think the answer about the expense is obvious because we've done raised, you know, so I think we know what that is. But that's not anything that the council has voted to do since I've, since I've been here that I recall.
I'm just hoping we can look at it. It would naturally slow the traffic coming, coming up and down. And that has been a problem intersection, and it's been a problem getting across from that public parking lot.
So you can add that as one of your options?
But not in lieu of paint for that intersection.
Well, you know, the first thing I looked at, not only today but before, was, you know, can we do an always stop there? And it's just too close to the main traffic signal up on 78. But, but we noticed a lot of vehicles today moving pretty strong through there.
Tell them how many were going the wrong way.
Yeah, and we, as we progressed down the sidewalk today, we were watching and we saw six vehicles going up the wrong, going the wrong way.
Ignore the one-way street, huh?
And actually, two of them met. One was going the wrong way, one was going the right way. And they're like, okay, let's figure this out.
Bobby, let me, let me throw, since I have some expertise in this area. You're probably looking at 45-degree angle parking, right?
Probably.
That's where you're getting your 24-foot?
Probably 60-degree angle.
And you're still coming up with 24-foot width?
That's, that's what the standard's called for, but we only have like 20 out there.
Okay.
Okay, before we put paint down, we got to decide if we're gonna raise that sidewalk.
No, we're, I would prefer, we've been waiting now for several months to get a painted crosswalk.
And it wasn't gonna be raised, huh?
I do not want to see this project held up.
Well, you...
Mr. Mayor, I think it's been a year we've been waiting.
Yes.
Not to speak out of turn, but, but the mayor's right. I mean, you know, somebody could get hit in the morning or this afternoon.
We're talking about less than $1,000 to paint that. If you do it in thermoplastic, you're talking about less than $2,000. So that's a small price to pay when I know for a fact somebody's gonna get hurt trying to cross up there.
I would have a question. Would you, he says this is up to H-E-H. Would we want to take this on and direct them to do it and get, recover the money from H-E-H? Or can you get H-E-H to make this a priority soon?
I would think, if you're asking my opinion, I think we could probably deliver it faster if we got Highway Services or somebody just come do it. I mean, first pretty day we had, they can do it in one, you know, in one day. Otherwise, we're waiting on schedule from H-E-H when they're gonna be back out here. But now, we can make it happen quickly if, you know, if we need to. I mean...
I just think if we're gonna continue to talk about it being a safety issue, then a delay doesn't make much sense.
I don't want to hold it up.
I would like to... Do we need to amend this agenda to put this item on here for Tuesday?
Sure.
Or do you just want to?
Whatever it takes to get the crosswalk painted.
Okay. Well, I'd like to add an item to the agenda to have that crosswalk painted for Tuesday. Could you do that, Bobby?
Do you want it done by Tuesday or do you want, I'll get you a price by Tuesday?
I think I'm asking for a price, but if it were done, I don't think I'd be upset. I'd just pay for it. We would. But I'm not trying to, I don't know how the weather's gonna be, but, but at the very least, I'd like to see it on the agenda for Tuesday.
Got you.
That's within the $10,000 management fee of the manager.
It'll be nice on the weekend, but the weather will be nice, but...
Thank you, Bobby. And the last thing I have, and I want to start out by thanking Alisa. She has been very good. I hope everybody's been reading the minutes from our board meetings that are being sent out, so thank you for that. I appreciate that. And we even had one, I've got one meeting set up with one of our boards that, as far as I know, hasn't met with the council for years now. And so we're moving forward on that. But with that said, one board that is not meeting is near and dear to my heart, obviously, and that's the Recreation Advisory Commission. Are we having meetings? If we are, I haven't received any. And that's probably because they haven't met and... Okay.
Flowers? Is Connie off?
Vic, or Tom, how do you want to, you want Vicki to address this or?
So, the last time the board met was in October. Just as a quick reminder, that was never a full board. So the, I would probably say the best way to describe it is the very, even the very first three meetings, we never even got the full rotation, participation for the first three meetings in a row. One of them immediately, probably within the first four months, resigned because their schedule was too... Sure. I want to say we probably had five to start. One member just never really made it from the very beginning. A second one resigned fairly soon into the process by the summer. We started in April. By the time the August meeting came around, they had already resigned because they had issues with the families. So we were already down. The third one person, I'd probably say they showed up to the second meeting, never came back to another meeting again. So I don't think it's really an issue of us, of that group never having met or meeting frequently. They fell off very early from the very beginning when the meetings were, we were going a couple months at a time before we'd even kicked off into our major initiatives, but we were just introducing them to the park system in general. So that one has been just a little bit more of a challenge with getting the, those that maybe are interested in planning in that regard. So some of the other things that I've focused on with our staff, for example, is in terms of any planning, starting, you know, coaches committees to talk a little bit more about maybe things that we could do or address just in a different way, those who may be a little bit more involved on a day-to-day basis, to making recommendations to staff on how improvements could be made. But those are a different set of volunteers than those that want to do some of the other big picture planning. As we prepare, for example, to kick off our master trail plan, the one, the lone person standing is certainly gonna be a part of that process. But I would say that one didn't have the participation from the very beginning.
Okay. Let me, since, again, this is, this is my 34-year career, you're not gonna have good participation unless you have something for the folks to do when they get there. I have a Recreation Advisory Commission member in the meeting, in the room right now. And when she was on that commission, there were plenty of things for them to do. And I'll just give you some suggestions in addition to the things that you've mentioned. You've got the Volunteer Appreciation Banquet coming up. Who chose that winner? And I don't want to know who the winner is, obviously, but who chose the winner?
The staff put together, there was a, all of the staff members put together criteria. They essentially know the people that are coming out, participating, really giving their time. So we had the staff from a couple years ago devise criteria and then evaluate and then make recommendations based upon that. So the Volunteer Appreciation Banquet for the Parks and Recreation Legion Services will be this coming May. But that's essentially how they did that.
Okay. That's one of the things that the Recreation Advisory Commission, and it took all the politics out of it, your staff members. It wasn't a matter of who could write the best essay. They all were responsible for turning those nominations in and a non-biased board picked the Volunteer of the Year for, I guess, what, eight, 10? Eight or 10 years? Another thing that you can do is you're all the time, I'm sure, still having coach issues. And if the staff person, the manager can't resolve those and it comes to you and you can't resolve it, then always give those coaches an outlet to go to in addition. Instead of coming to the city manager or the city council, they could go to the Recreation Advisory Commission and talk to them about those. We also had issues with background checks that were not sensitive but could be considered questionable as far as coaching capabilities, and the Recreation Advisory Commission would look at those. So you've got to make it worth their while to show up or people just aren't gonna show up. But my expectation, and I'm one person, this council may feel differently, but my expectation is that every board that we have should have a meeting. If you were the only department head there and there's not another volunteer there, I still want to have meetings periodically. That is my expectation. And if this council feels differently, they can say so. But if you have one member on that Recreation Advisory Commission, I want to see a meeting. And the other side of that is if we're not gonna have a committee for the Recreation Department or for any of the committees for that matter, then let's just abolish it. Let's not do something or say we're gonna have all these boards and then not have any kind of participation and no one show up because that's a waste of taxpayer money and it's a waste of time. So that's my expectation on that. And just one final comment on that. One of the best boards that I think we have is the Cemetery Commission. Would you, would you agree with that? Well, the, you know, that, but he had, you know, those folks, but my point was gonna be, if I can get a board to show up on a Cemetery Commission... if I can get a board to show up on a cemetery commission, surely I can get one on recreation to show up.
Well, you know what, I, I'm a big advocate, as a, as somebody that's a planner, I'm a big advocate in community engagement and, you know, having things for them to talk about and do, and we continued to meet even when it was only two people showing up. So, you know, I don't want to necessarily give the impression that there was, we just weren't choosing to meet. We met a, a number of times last year, but again, it is, you know, just the two people there who had the things that we would go through and what we would talk about and plan. There were a lot of folks who, we had a few that said, hey, I certainly just want to be a part of discussion of Connors Road Park. Certainly the, all the information went out, they just didn't come, so.
I will be at your next meeting, please let me know when that date is.
So, we will be down, we, we have to post to get some more folks involved. You know, we have a, again, our, we're kicking off our big master trail plan and so that'll be a big part of the focus of, you know, steering group and some of our major planning initiatives, but outside of that, we, we really just have to get some more folks recruited to talk about planning, recreation, parks and recreation.
So we have how many vacancies on the Recreation Advisory Commission right now? How many members do you have on them?
Seven, wasn't there?
There was only five to, initially when we first started.
How many are you supposed to have?
I thought we had seven.
No, 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 you never had.
Seven, no, we, are there seven slots?
There's seven slots.
Okay, that's what I meant. Because I thought we filled most of them, there was one or two people we didn't put on because one of them wasn't here. I think it was Dennis Brown, he wasn't here for part of the year and we didn't think, he didn't think, or there was some sort of discussion that he shouldn't fill one of those slots since he was absent for a number of months.
He was the one individual that just wanted to do the Connors Road.
Yeah, I think we had a couple like that.
To answer your original question, there's one person standing at this point, which is Michael Young.
My original question was, how many slots are there? How many are there supposed to be?
Seven.
Seven, and there's one still there. So, in, in some regards, this is specifically about your, your board, Recreation Advisory Committee, because I've had a number of calls from people who chose, or emails, who have chose to resign from that because they didn't feel like they were participating. And so my question, just for you, and I want to talk about this generally as well, but just for you, is there an issue with being able to schedule a meeting every month?
There's not, my biggest thing is I want it to be very agenda-driven. So, what I mentioned to them at the very first meeting, when we do any of our meetings, I could tell you that we're gonna meet every month, but if I need you to come in because we have something going on and you might need to meet three times, that you may just be prepared to do it. I didn't want to hold anything else over for extra meetings if there's something.
Well, let me ask, could you have material enough to have at least one meeting every month?
I would say, I would like to look at that. I, I don't want to just say that every single month that we are going to necessarily meet. Because even with my other boards, we don't necessarily do that, it's agenda-driven.
Okay, well, maybe you can come back to us with that, because here, here's my general observation here. I, I've been here for a year now, thirteen months or something. These boards don't feel like they're appreciated, they don't feel like they're involved, and I think that part of it is process. I think that they don't have structure and, and scheduling, they don't know when they're supposed to meet, half the time they don't get proper communication, and this is not, you just happen to be standing there, it's not just you, and I, some of it is part of that, but really, what I'm, the, the point I'm making is that this council is going to take back its power with these boards. And what I mean by that is, those boards are creatures of the council. They're not gonna be sidelined as a way to keep them from being able to operate and communicate with the council. We're gonna find ways, some of us have talked about it, to have these folks show up periodically through the year so that we can hear from them. They need to feel like what they're doing out there matters. And it only matters to us, because they belong to us, they don't belong to staff. So, sometimes I give them advice, if you don't like how it's going, schedule your own meeting. And then when staff don't show up, let this guy know or let some of us know. I don't know if that's the proper way. Staff needs to take the lead on that and start getting this corrected. And that, that's where we're gonna move toward, if, if, if I have any say on it. It's not directed at you, you just happen to be standing there, it came up, so. But some of it, you know, obviously, really does have to do with the Recreation Department because you're down to one member. To me, that says something. And also the emails and phone calls I get say a few things.
Same here.
So, okay, I'll get off that box for a minute.
Okay.
All right, let me jump on my box. The issues that's come about from the Recreation Department in the past ten years, there's different ways to do these advisory committees. It has changed in the past few years to be proactive with the department rather than proactive with the individuals participating. We have in the past asked each individual department that divides itself in seniors, gymnastics, athletics, whether it's baseball, football, basketball, whatever, ask that department person to supply a person on this board. That is an advocate for those individuals that want to participate. And it may be ten or twelve, but I promise you this, two things, they won't have to fill out an application. They don't have to come before somebody and say, we want you to be on this board. They're gonna come to the individual person and say, I want to be on this board, I want to represent our kids in recreation. We've got almost seventeen hundred, or more than seventeen hundred kids in this, this department, seventeen hundred last year. Now it's climbing. We've got to be able to communicate individually with the programs that we're talking about. Not, and I don't disagree about agendas now, we need to make sure that we are structured in what we go through in a process. But we need to make sure what that process is based on those individual comments we're getting. That way you don't have fifteen football coaches or nineteen baseball coaches coming in the evening screaming about something that takes place. They've got an individual they can go to and describe what's taking place. That way they can go, whether it's to you, whether it's to him, whether it's to him, or whether it's to us, and say, here's what we've got, we want to make a decision on it. And then you get all those folks in a room, when you make that decision, you've got the whole community behind you. And you normally don't have, it'll cut your questions or, or aggravation in half, or has in the past. And all the times I was taking those recreation classes in school, that was the way it was supposed to be done. The idea is for us, it's, it's not us, it's not, it's us, it's not us against them, it's we. And I won't, yeah, we all use the term that's been thrown about, we are, we are. And this is a way that we want to make sure that we represent ourselves when we go to other places. We got basketball teams, young kids playing in state tournaments, we got two teams in that, and then we got the girls playing the state tournament. We need to be recognized throughout the state now, as we worked our last ten to twelve to fifteen years as being one of the top recreation departments in the state. You know, we talk about going to Savannah and whatever, you put a Villa Rica, put a Villa Rica badge on and go to Savannah ten years ago and you couldn't go to classes because that'd be ten or twelve people asking you different questions. How'd you do this? How'd you do that? Why did you do this? Where'd you get the money? All those things are relevant to what we're showing today in your paper, in your paper, and on TV. And with all the stuff that's going on throughout the nation, we need to be recognizing these kids and putting them in places where we can control them, they don't control us. But then, I'm sorry, I'm getting off my preaching.
Well, you, you make me think about something that is interesting. We have all of these kids over there in those recreation programs. And I guess it surprises me that we don't have a lot of parents banging on your door, can we get on that board? So, I, I guess I would just ask you, would you please make some kind of, not that you're not, I don't know what you're doing. I haven't been over there to ask you, but do some kind of a reach, you know, outreach to these parents. Try to get people on that board, try to fill that up for us. That, that's what I'd like to see you do. I mean, we will as well, to the extent that we can, but if you're interacting with all these parents over there, say, hey, we've got these openings on these boards, see if you can't fill them up. I'd like to see that board full again.
Thank you, Vicky.
What is, what is the direction to the board? What, what is the board supposed to do for us? Feedback?
Well, maybe we could let Vicky tell us a little bit about what she would expect out of a board.
Well, it all depends upon the agenda. So, for example, like I said, one of the things that I thought was gonna be really helpful, the initial board that came on, most of them were, they were going out and they may have been visiting the games, and a lot of them came because they said, hey, I got grandkids that, you know, play, and that's what initially sparked my interest. And so I said, you know, there are a couple of ways that I think that we can improve the program. And I said, it may include me talking to folks and reaching out outside of you guys, and I said that very much from the beginning. The coaches committees were a big part of that, because they're engaged in a way that sometimes some of the folks that come in and volunteer, it's a very different way. When I've talked to my other staff recently about, hey, we have this active, living discussion that we've been having, how can we create a board that really kind of starts to create and set an agenda for what active living looks like? Because the biggest concerns or inquiries that we always get is we cater everything to a younger audience or to the kids, and there's a segment of the population that's being missed altogether. So, that has been my task to my programs, my apologies. To, that those volunteers, that that's something that they can look at on, you know, what does it mean for us or for Villa Rica to, if they want to get active, they're probably gonna be that component or that demographic. What is that gonna look like for them? And have, have them sit down to begin to have the conversation and maybe begin to set some goals on how we may be able to change or modify our programs accordingly. But, like I said, it's, it's very, it just depends on what segment of the population that we happen to be talking about. So, I think those are just some of the things that, as staff, when we talk about, you know, parks and recreation, what does that look like? We've had all of these, the discussion about these new parks that are coming up. Certainly, I wanted them to be a part of the conversation, and you know, I'll go back to that, but, you know, when you have a, a smaller group of people that are on board and you're creating, in some senses, to me, what are larger, almost regional parks in a sense, you have to have a much bigger and broader conversation and bring more people to the table. So, it just really depends on what are the things or what are the goals that we plan on implementing that year. And that would determine how we're going to use them, the frequency that they're going to meet. So, those are usually approaches that I undertake when I'm planning any type of service for, any service for the community, I would say.
To sum up, I want this board active. If there's nobody there but me and you at the meeting, then I want to see an agenda, I want to see minutes of the meetings. If we can have a full cemetery committed, commission, I want a full Recreation Advisory Commission. Does anybody see it any different? Okay, thank you, Vicky.
I would just, I still don't quite understand what the purpose is gonna be of this board, what is this board gonna do for us? Like all boards, you know, you form a board to do what? Just give you back feedback?
Unless you want, I mean, there, there used to be a policy and procedures for the Recreation Advisory Commission, is that still, do you still have that? Is that, is that your question, what, what their responsibilities are gonna be?
Know what we can expect from an advisory board?
They were in advisory, so any of the policies that we may want to create, as I talked to you about, if we say we want to grow in terms of active living, they provide feedback. What do we want, what are the goals? What do you want that to look like? What are some things that we may be able to do, do to implement that? That's just one example of like a policy that the Parks and Recreation Department may come up with. We may come up with a, you know, but at the end of the day, it was just an advisory committee that was to make recommendations that we could kind of vet things before we may present them to the city council or to just give us feedback in general on things that we may be as a department able to improve, that's one.
Vicky, do you still have that policies and procedures manual for the Recreation Advisory Commission? It should be on your computer if you don't have a hard copy.
It's not on my computer, but I think it was in the original bylaws. I know my computer's, uh.
Do you have the same computer I had?
I do not.
So, the hard drive was not copied off of that old computer?
No.
It was just all the way?
I don't know where that computer is, I will certainly say.
Okay, can we see all of the boards we've created, this is their purpose, this is what they're there for, feedback? That would, I mean, I've always wondered, we create, I was, the library board we had, it just met, but nothing ever happened for a long, long time.
I'll see if I can find that document. Moving on along, okay, thank you for your indulgence, counsel on those items, and for staff for, for listening. You have the minutes of the January the eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, meeting and the February the sixth, two thousand eighteen, meeting, so please be prepared to make changes or vote on those, and vote on those next Tuesday night. If you know of any changes now, now would be the time to bring those up.
I already sent mine in.
Okay. All right, item number, whatever, we're on pet event at the mill. Who's doing this?
Is it gonna be me?
I don't know.
Man, I don't, has everybody received an email on that? Okay, I knew you did, I knew Tom did, I know I did.
Well.
Oh, okay.
Everybody as in who? I don't recall getting an email.
I don't see, this is the first time I've seen it.
The only thing I've heard about this.
Is that better?
Question.
So can you turn the volume up, because I know we had good volume on this at one time?
I'm not putting on the event or anything like that. This is, this is a proposal coming from Dr. Wen, Dr. Burnett, who takes care of the animals out at our Gold Museum, Complimentary and that sort of thing. And it came through Ms. Runyon Vow, and she sent an email out about exactly what they wanted to do for this pet event. You know, we used to have, I wasn't a part of it, but there used to be a pet parade that occurred down there and everything. This event, what it really comes down to is, are we gonna allow animals to be at the mill in certain circumstances? I think that's what the city manager is looking for guidance from us, rather than it being an administrative decision. This particular event would last for a few hours. I think he's planning on doing music, his band is going to do music in the evening. It's educational, as far as pet care, it's very restrictive as to who can bring a pet even on the premises. They have it where they have to check their shots and they put a little thing on their collar to make sure. They are also going to offer immunizations and things at a low cost. There are some pet food companies that want to have a booth there. And they even talked about giving some educational stuff from the stage on wildlife and dealing with wildlife and that sort of thing. If I were putting it on, I'd be able to tell you all that was in that email, but bottom line, are we going to allow, in this case it would be dogs, are we going to allow them at the mill for any event? I mean, for a specific event, not any event, like we're having a concert and everybody can bring their dog.
What is, what is the policy? Is there a policy?
Anything in writing? If there's anything in writing, I haven't seen it.
There used to be.
Wasn't it a no-dog?
Well, and there could be.
For the events in the park? That's what I, I thought was in place. I don't know if they utilizing it, because I see some dogs in some places, but that was, from what I can remember, that was one of the policies that no dog, no animal was allowed in the park.
And distinct, just to distinguish it, and then go ahead, from coming to other events and having a set aside pet event, that's the distinction here compared to, hey, are we gonna let pets come to concerts and the Halloween stuff and all that?
I haven't seen the written policy. It has been the standard practice that we do not allow dogs or any pets in the amphitheater. If I'm not mistaken, there also are signs that put, that are up that says no dogs allowed. So, that has been, when we were approached about the project, that was kind of our position and stance on it. Tom and I have talked about it at length. Our concern, A, is not necessarily the animals, as I tell people, I have a problem with the animals, it's more of the owners that we generally tend to have the issue with. As I tell people, I have a problem with the animals, it's more of the owners that we generally tend to have the issue with. And secondly, is the fact of the health concerns. Because you're having this event and then very shortly after, we have a concert. So, now you have people sitting on the ground and amphitheaters made for humans and stuff may or may not have been cleaned up after the animals. I mean, there's no, I'm not gonna go out there and go over the amphitheater and find toothpaste and make sure all of the remains have been cleaned up. So, um, that was the other issue, is how do you address that? So, um, I think that this event has happened at the amphitheater once before. It's not an annual thing, it's never happened since I've been here. So, um, I, I'm not sure what the history behind it is, but, um, that's kind of where, what our thought process is. And obviously, anytime we deviate from a policy, uh, that's a council decision, not staff decision.
Well, you're, you didn't say it was a policy, you said it was a practice. Do you have a book of policies for that amphitheater?
Can I answer that? Wherever this lost computer is, there is a complete policy and procedures manual. Every park is mentioned, whether they can have pets or not pets. And Janet's shaking her head, so she's evidently seen it.
Do you have a policy? Do you have a book? Do you know where to get one?
Wonder what happened to your computer?
Bet you see it running around in there. Even on the...
We, we've gotta get a handle on it.
Thing, you see a lot of dogs in there.
That's a really bad idea, because that's fireworks. I don't know what people are thinking. We have had to address that, I think on the 3rd of July before. I certainly don't have a problem with an event like this. It's on a Saturday, it's a couple hours, it finishes Saturday evening. There are people that are involved with it that would make sure things are cleaned up. And you won't be having a concert there. Since this is a Saturday, the earliest you could have a concert event there would probably be the next weekend, which leaves a number of days in between. But, whatever. I don't think pets should be at concerts and other, in the Halloween candy event. I don't think that's a good mix.
And to that point, that was staff's other concern is, so if we do a concert and then people start bringing their dogs and then you tell them that they're cat, and it's like, well, I brought my dog at this other event. So, then it gets confusing for people when they can and can't bring their dogs.
But there, there's a distinct difference when it is a pet event. Nothing else is a pet event that occurs there. That's a distinct difference. But, obviously, some people...
She keeps saying dogs.
As long as it's on the lease, sure.
Here, here's my concern from, from, I think there is a distinction between having dogs at concerts and, and July 3rd fireworks and having a pet event. But my concern would be, and this is something that I would hope that, that, uh, the city manager and our staff would look at, is, uh, in my experience, the problem is not so much, like you said, the pets, as the, as the owners and the hair that's generated after the fact. I know, I know we've gotten some complaints. We had, we did have an event several years ago, and we did get some complaints about, you know, dog hair, where they groomed the pets and, and it was still at the amphitheater. So, you know, I, I would just hope that, that staff would look at that and, and put some constraints or some, some kind of provisions that made sure that the, the folks cleaned up after the, after the event. If, if it's allowed, if it's this council's desire to make that happen. I do think we need to make sure it's, it's presentable after the fact.
It's real simple. No.
I'd still like to see a policy. And, I mean, I'm not necessarily saying that to you, Janet, but maybe wherever Jim is, if he can find that hard drive. I mean, it seems like there's a lot of stuff missing around here. I would like to know what the policies are. To me, that matters. It matters that we do things consistently. If that's the policy, I mean, I don't, personally, the councilwoman sent me, uh, an email or a text and asked me if I'd have a problem with it. And I said, well, should I? I mean, is there something controversial about it? And she said, no, I don't think so. And, um, I hope you don't mind I shared that.
No, no, that's fine.
But the only thing that, that, that I would say is, is the more I thought about it, the more I thought about my own personal situation. My little boy has allergies to almost everything. And so, whether or not you leave a mess out there or whether or not you leave, uh, hair that you can see, you, you still might have dander and stuff out there that later on, when they go rolling around on the ground, because I can't seem to stop him from doing that, I'm gonna spend the next hour and a half dealing with his sneezing. Of course, I could take some Benadryl and, but I'd still like to know what the policy is. And I didn't mean to get off on that. But the reason we do policies is because they study them. They come to us with a lot of information. We look at it from angles that we might not think about while we sit here. So, allergies is probably something we don't think about right off, right off the bat.
So, Tom, to, so that we don't leave y'all hanging, do you want us to see if there's a consensus one way or another so we don't drag this out for months? Because if they wanted to rent this thing for June and this is now March, they probably need to know whether to plan it or not. So, we probably need to give somebody an answer, what, by, by Tuesday, we should be ready to say?
Yeah, they, she came to me, I told, I talked to Chris. He told me what the practice was. I told her, no, she went to you, you brought it to council.
I didn't know she'd come to you.
Yeah, it started with me.
Okay, so, you want to find out if there's a consensus today or Tuesday?
We can't vote.
Well, I know we can't vote. Okay. Berlin kind of didn't, did, but didn't.
Seems undecided.
I'm not sure where he stands, I'll have to ask again. Okay, alrighty, Tuesday, I guess. Thanks, Chris.
Would the correct answer to this dilemma be that the applicant needs to come to the council next Tuesday night and make their pitch? Okay, all right.
How long does that wait and last?
You know, I do think I remember her saying something about that. I don't think she's back Tuesday.
Can we move on?
Yeah.
Are you waiting the hell out there?
Can we move on, please? I don't care who she's married.
Okay. All right, moving along. Uh, city manager evaluation?
Almost, Sarah, almost. We're losing folks.
Yeah, we had it, we had it. So, uh, when we first started looking at, um, having to hire a new city manager last year, one of the things that I, I pushed for and wanted to have was a evaluation system. Because I think it's, it's fair for the city manager to know where he stands formally with the council. And so, at the time, I created, uh, through some other templates, a couple of ways to do that. And today, I've emailed you all a copy of it. It's basically a two-part, and I, this is my proposal. We may accept it, we may not. It's a two-part. Uh, one, individually, there's two attachments in your email so you can see it all. Uh, one of them is six or eight pages of individual, uh, evaluation. The way this one is set up is that you would then hand that, uh, or pass it along to the city attorney, who would then use the, all of the individuals to use the second attachment to create a compiled, uh, evaluation that the council would then review in probably some sort of an executive session, but at the city attorney's guidance with the city manager. Uh, and then, once we've all agreed on that final document, then we would all sign off on it. Um, and that would be his evaluation. And I would, I would ask that you all review that and, and maybe by, uh, Tuesday, we could vote on whether we're gonna do that and then get the process started. He, he will have been here a year, uh, in June. And I think... Said July. But either way, uh, we need to be doing that forthwith. So, that's my proposal.
And I had talked to council member McDougall about this and asked him to sort of take the lead because he did come up with that proposal. Well, I think it's very important, we have a good city manager now. And, uh, that's my personal opinion. But, but I think we owe it to any city manager to tell them how they're doing, what they need to improve on, and then expect them to improve on it, and that's what this is. So, I hope the council has a chance to look at that and approves that so we can move that process forward.
Oh, and I think we're supposed to do it anyway. And Berlin, the time when Berlin talked about even for regular employees, that it was only right to have an objective evaluation, not just something a department had subjectively said, yeah, that's a good employer, isn't it? That it's only fair to have something that's clear and defined for both the person and for us.
And, and that was part of the thinking in creating the two, the two-part system. Each of us would, would do our own individually. And then, from that, it would, but anyway, I think I explained that already. I'll just make one point, though, because as he does the whole time we sit here, he tells me things. And he reminded me that this was supposed to be done in October. So, when we do this, we...
December. I heard December. I'm over here.
Six, six months, six months in.
That he hears.
Came right through your ear.
Right through here. So, we're late on it now, but, but in fairness, that's created for an annual. Got more commentary from out there. Could be early or we could do it again in December. Okay.
Okay, since we all, we all have evaluations, uh, does everyone, everyone, the employees? I'm talking with city manager right now. Do they get a written evaluation every year?
Are they all written? Where's, they're written?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, next.
Moving along.
One more clarification, is it on their anniversary date or is it a particular date?
It's after their anniversary date typically, I think.
I mean, is, is it their hire date that you do it every year? Okay.
I, I'd like to hear Ms. Rooks or see Ms. Rooks come up with an evaluation for him as well. I have not seen what he's talking about yet. You know, I'm saying is, if we wait till Tuesday night and we don't like what it says, we're backing up again.
I asked the city clerk to print that out for the councilman sometime today, because he won't be able to see it otherwise.
Does he have anything just lying around?
Would you like to see it? Hey, you wanna see it?
You know, a city manager evaluation just lying around on your desk?
Hang on, hang on, Stephanie, hang, hang on just a minute. If, if we're gonna talk, we need to come to the microphone. If we're gonna ask questions to staff, we need to do it right.
That was my fault, not her fault.
For the folks that watch these meetings at home and they have no idea what's going on. Okay. I'm not sure I have any idea what's going on Sunday. So, all right, moving along to tab E unless there's anything up?
To Leslie's question, I do not have anything lying around on my desk. But I can query my peers at other cities and other counties to see what they have, they use to evaluate their CEO.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Why wouldn't she use the same avail that we're using?
Alternate, huh?
Tab E, finance. Sarah?
Will you put the PowerPoint up? Oh, yippee. I love these. So, this, being a new year, I wanted to bring a different format for our financial update. And instead of trying to tell y'all where to look on one page, I thought a PowerPoint might be easier to direct the conversation. So, this is our January 2018 update. That doesn't mean 2017 is necessarily done, we're still working on it, but, um, I felt like I could go ahead and bring you, um, January. Okay, um, so this is a cash update, which we haven't necess, we've done, um, by month, but not comparing it to the prior year. So, that first line is the total cash in bank. This is all of our bank accounts together. At the end of this January, we had $9.1 million. At the end of last January, we had $7 million. And then, um, as I've mentioned in other financial updates, our system tracks which fund our pooled cash belongs to. So, these top three are not actual bank accounts, they're part of the pooled cash. So, general fund at the end of this January was 7.1 million compared to last year's 6 million. Our water sewer fund, uh, actually had $838,000 at the end of January. And keep in mind, we, we paid the bond payment actually yesterday. Thank you very much. But last January, we had, we showed a negative cash position for water sewer fund. Sanitation and solid waste, we do have a negative cash position there, negative 423,000. And that's higher than, lower than last year, negative 257,000 dollars. These next three accounts are our SPOSS accounts. These are actual separate bank accounts, not part of our pooled fund, we have to keep these separate. So, 2008 SPOSS, at the end of January, we had $634,000. 2015 SPOSS from Carroll County, 403,000. And 2016 Douglas, that's our newest one, we just started receiving money for that one. 600, almost 650,000 dollars in the bank for that one. Any questions on that?
There's, um, I had two comments, well, I love the chart except for one thing. I'm used to seeing progressive here, like 17 first, 18 second. You know, the columns seem backwards to me, I'm reading them backwards. Also, the growth, you didn't show anything for previous year, you didn't do a comparison on the growth.
That is true.
Like the, the difference?
Yeah. From last, you know, like she did the others, 17, 18?
The billing permits, okay.
The Douglas County SPOSS, how much of that is gonna have to be sent back to them?
Um, it's about 157,000 a year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, self-funded insurance.
900 something thousand.
Yes, over the six years. All right, so this compares what we paid last year to United Healthcare compared to this year when we're act, we're paying actual claims. So, you can see there's a big difference. So, when we would send that money to United Healthcare, whether we had that much in claims or not, they got, they got to keep that money. Well, now, we're getting to keep that money for what's not paid. So, um, last year, we, we had spent in just four months, $450,000 to United Healthcare. So far, in our self-funded plan for the last four months, almost 300,000. So, we've saved over 151,000. Now, this is, we're calling the savings, but this is just a comparison of last year to this year. What's in the, our bank account's actually higher than that because, um, every payroll, I'm taking money out, um, of the pooled cash account and putting it in this account for when the drafts are made every week for the actual claims.
Let me ask you a question, and, uh, I, this is just for my own information. So, on the United Healthcare, when you do these comparisons to last year particularly, are you comparing it to what our renewal rate would have been or what we actually had paid before?
What we actually paid.
Okay, so actually the renew, we actually are probably doing better because you're not even using the renewal rate.
Correct.
I, I'm wasting time for the train. Good point, here's another comment from the city manager, the number of employees are also up.
A lot of very... Yeah, I, I just want to say too that, that, you know, it, having those, especially for us new guys, um, it, it's been a traumatic year with everything that's been going on. And, and this has been a, a bright spot. And, and I just want to continue to thank Tom and the staff and Wendell, uh, Stephanie for, for everything that y'all are doing. I mean, we're saving, we've saved 151,571 dollars. It goes into Villarica's account. This doesn't go in anybody else, this doesn't go into United Healthcare's pocket, blue cross and blue shield. This is savings that we had generated. And, uh, I'm not, I, every, every time I see these numbers, I'm, I'm like, why? If it works for us, why is no one else doing this? And, and so, I think that, uh, that, uh, we ought to be commended. And when I say we, I'm, I'm giving credit to the staff primarily for, for doing this. So, thank y'all for continuing to do this.
I think there's a lot of people that are doing it, that's, that's a big population, that's like, we got in the group.
If not, they will be.
Well, and, and the other thing, and the other councilman, council member Beth said this to me the other day, and I thought he was gonna say, oh, guess what I found out about the insurance? I'm like, oh, here we go, I'm finally gonna hear something negative. And, uh, not that you always tell me things negative, I'm not implying that. But, uh, he was actually telling me how much money he had saved, uh, with his prescriptions. And, uh, I've heard that now from a dozen, at least a dozen employees, that they're saving money on their prescriptions. So, not only is the city saving money, but the employees are saving money. So, Stephanie, I don't know what you hear, but I haven't heard the first negative thing. So, oh, don't tell me, just, just say, no. Don't bust my bubble, it's...
You'll make, you'll make a bestie for him?
Little bumps in the beginning, but...
We do need you to...
Yeah.
Sorry.
Everybody needs a mic.
There have been some bumps in the road, but a lot of it is for the employees misunderstanding what's going on. So, I tried to explain it to them again. And then, if there is an issue with a claim, I call Wendell, he calls the people at Healthscope or wherever it needs to be. And usually, the claims are adjudicated again within 24 to 48 hours.
That's, that's great.
It, it, it's a learning curve.
It is.
Right.
And Wendell will be here next Thursday to, uh, re-educate some of our employees.
Thank you.
So, mayor there? I think part of the credit... because he bit off some of the most difficult contracts to decipher cold with no warning, not much time. I mean, he had, you know, you remember what that first stack of like seven or eight or nine contracts looked like. So, I think David gets a lot of credit for just willing to take a chance, because he assumed a lot of risk in that. But to answer your question, one of the reasons that we don't hear a lot of our peers talk about this is self-funded insurance was a, has been a thing for a long time for big companies. And even 10 years ago, probably, a city had to have 500 employees or more, even 1,000, to do a plan like this. And the other thing that makes it difficult is, you really only have an opportunity to switch in the year following a really good claim experience year. So, you might ask yourself, well, why didn't Wendell pitch us two years ago, or a year ago? Why this year? Well, the reason is 16, 17 was a good claim year, and the years before weren't. So, there was a window of opportunity, and that's why Wendell acted sort of like his hair was on fire in August. And you remember how much pressure he put on David, that we had to get that thing done in October? Is, we had a really bad month of claims in, let's say, July, that wasn't in the rating period. That if we had not gotten that done in October, and that month had gotten into the rating, then that window would have closed, and we wouldn't be talking about this. Right? So, there's a lot of cities that maybe would be, will be interested in this in the future, but they have to wait through that cycle of up and down years until they get a down year of claims, and then they can, they can jump through this window if all the stars line up. So, we were fortunate to get into this thing.
There you go.
I see, ma'am. We took some of your time, Sarah.
All right. Next, we wanted to show growth in the city. So, these are new construction building permits and water sewer taps. So, you can see, it's broken up by residential and commercial, and I'll look at adding a comparison to the prior year. So, in new construction, residential alone, just in January, we had 36 permits and 34 taps, both in water and sewer. No commerc- we did have commercial permits, but they were either for remodel or trade permits. So-
And I think we did 60 all of last year. Is that about right?
Can I, are you going back to the little box, other highlights?
I am. All right, moving on. Wanted to show you kind of an income statement for water and sewer, and the next one will be sanitation, solid waste. So, this is looking at this January compared to last January. January is a little bit different month, because I have to post, so when we go read the meters in January, it hadn't been read since December. So, part of the usage that we're billing for is for December. So, I have to back some of that revenue into the prior month for January. I won't do it any other months, but for, since we were splitting the year, I have to do it then. I was just looking, I believe it was, so $263,000 was put back into December. So, this month does look a little bit different than the next month's will look, hopefully. But you can see the water sewer revenue and that miscellaneous revenue, $197,000. That's because it included all those tap fees that I just showed you. And then, you can see the breakout of the expenses by department, water, sewer, distribution, and collection, as well as our debt expense. So, we pay the debt twice a year, but I wanted to kind of smooth it over the year. So, you're seeing a one month's worth of the debt here, so we can see a month-to-month comparison. Otherwise, February is going to look like we had a huge debt expense, when really, I just wanted to show it even across the year. Depreciation, again, that's one month's worth. So, we show a net loss for water sewer of $185,000. Again, I had to back out $263,000 in revenue and put it in December, but if you look at the taps, if we didn't have that tap revenue, we still would have had a loss. So, the taps would have saved us in this month.
Okay, question. So, as of January the 31st, 2018, we still have a net loss in our enterprise fund of $185,387. At this time, December, I mean, January 31st, 2017, we had a net loss to our enterprise fund of $300,407. So, we have reduced our loss in our enterprise fund by, my calculation is 40%.
And the debt service went up.
Right. So-
The debt ser- so, the total debt payment this year compared to last year is about the same, but we're having to take it in nine months instead of 11 months.
I got you. Okay.
My question. Starting way, way back when, we have not seen depreciation, except maybe one thing, in 24 years? Yeah. And what I'm, what I'm thinking is that what you've done is taken depreciation totally at one expense, but the folks back then was taking it individually and adding that into each individual line item. Otherwise, why are we doing depreciation now, and they didn't do it?
Give it one more chance.
A lot of times, people will just do it at the end of the year when they're getting ready for the audit. But I'm posting a monthly estimate-
Okay.
-so that we can see what it does to our books. Because basically, you're accounting for capital that you would need to purchase. So-
Sounds I think that capital wasn't purchased. That's maybe why it didn't need to be put in but once.
Maybe so.
When we see these in the future, is it going to be total for the year from January, February, March? Or are we just going to see, is this just one month comparison?
That's just one month, yeah. We were talking about what it would look like in February. I plan to do year-to-date, so we can see cumulatively what it's doing.
I would like-
I love this, yeah. Yeah.
I like everything you've done here.
Yeah.
But I'm like, the information kind of-
You see all my notes. I've got, I love it. Love it.
Good. All right.
Thank you.
Next one is our sanitation, solid waste. Same thing. Part of the revenue we got this year was for tax, I mean, trash usage, excuse me, in December. So, that's been backed out. It was $42,000 that I had to take out of January and put back into December. So, you can see the revenue there.
This will really cha- sorry.
This will really change, though, won't it?
Yeah, I'm interested to see how February looks once, because this, February was our first month. We had the rate increases. So, it'll be interesting to see.
And, and garbage pickup for everyone.
Correct. So, you can see there, our cost for sanitation, that is all waste industries, and then solid waste is the cost of our crews going out, and then depreciation, again. So, we've had a net loss of $70,000 at the end of January.
So, you've got two changes there, that, one that I know about, one that I'm not sure. So, we know tipping fees went up in October.
Yeah, that's the discipline.
So, that's, so we know that that's in the 18 number, not in the 17 number.
Yes.
And then, you reallocated payroll starting-
January 1st.
Okay, so that's in 18 and not in 17.
That's correct.
Right. So, you've got two things that are driving expenses up in 18-
That we didn't have in-
That we didn't see in 7.
In that tipping fee, just for those that are watching that may not know, this is the, this is what we're charged when we carry Refuge to Douglas County. So, that's, that's the tipping fee when we talk about that. And I have to ask this question just because it's there. What, $23 miscellaneous revenue?
Sure.
We don't know what that is. Okay.
Well, it's such a big number, could you look that up?
Yeah. And I-
Is that where are you?
I just, you know, that, you can tell when you've got someone that's really on the ball, when they can account for $23 on a 20-something million dollar budget, that's, that's impressive.
I can get back to you if you need to.
Try not to lose any sleep over that one.
Okay, lastly, so every month, I figure there might be something special, or interesting, or different that happened that month. So, this, I figure my other highlights will change every month. So, this month, I wanted to update you again on the qualifying senior for the discount. So, before we went to the low-income discount, we had 670 qualified seniors who were receiving the discount. As of the 22nd of this month, or last month, actually, we had 189 that had qualified, which is 28% of that original amount. And we have eight that have turned in a partial application. The staff has reached out to them, but we still haven't received, I don't know, either income or lease or something. So, they haven't gotten it yet. So, our current limit is $24,120, which is two times the poverty limit. So, wanted to ask what y'all's thoughts were on how you feel about that 28%. Do we want to think about raising the limit?
Well, you said you were going to change the other highlights every month. That was sort of what you were thinking. I would like to see you bring this one back-
Okay.
-next month, and then that would probably be a time for us to make a decision, after we see two months of this. That's my opinion.
Are they still coming in on a regular basis?
We did have more this week than I, it kind of flattened out, but I talked to someone even this morning, so, and he had $25,000, so he was over the limit.
I would, for the record, state that, you know, when we did the Rattila study, we, the Rattila study pointed out that they anticipated there would be 50% of those 670 residents that qualified, and so, we're at 28% right now. So, I hope this council considers adjusting that 22,000-
24,000.
24,000, whatever.
Or 17.
Uh, you know, to capture more of those seniors that may indeed qualify as low-income seniors. So, this, this report, as this council member McDougal said, if we look at it next month and we see that number about the same, then, you know, I would, I would hope this council looks at increasing that, that number.
Let me ask you a question, Sarah, if I could. Do you have any indication about the applications that you received that did not qualify? Are you able to talk with us about whether, whether moving this number would right now, and I mean the qualifying number, would change that percentage? Do you have that kind of information?
I think it would. We do have, we did, anybody that filled one out that didn't qualify, we kept those. But I know there were other instances where, we know there's been people who just didn't qual- or apply, because they knew that they made over the 24,000. So, it's hard to say. I would only know the ones that we've either spoken to or have in the, in our file. But I think there were, like I said, I talked to one today that was 25,000. So, I know bringing it up to 30, either a flat 30,000 or 2.5 times the poverty, poverty would be $30,150. I think it would help.
And if you, if we said that the 50%, did they say 50% would qualify?
That was the estimate that our rate study folks used. But we, I mean, they got that number from us, because we, we had no indication of what anybody's household income was. So, that was just-
So, it's really guesswork. It's a guess.
My concern is, as you said, Rocko, you really don't know how many that did not qualify that you have. I'd like to know, really, how many has been brought back in to figure of that 670 that did not qualify, that kind of, my thought is, if there's 297 that did, what happened to those others? How can we approach tho- those other folks that just chose not to do anything about it, to find out, really, if, if we do go up on the amount of money, would they qualify then? And there's, there's some folks that just ain't going to qualify, period. So, and that's okay. But, you know, it'd be nice to have a greater number of people that actually, whether they qualified or not, send it in.
And I'm not sure how we would actually find out who, you know, those didn't, and how that would. But let me ask you this. How many applications did you get?
I don't know that number.
Okay. Because that would be something, I might be prepared even now to do it, if I thought you got X number of applications and only this percentage qualified, because then I could make an educated guess about how many of the remaining would qualify. And I might be prepared even earlier to change this number.
Like, for instance, if you, you know how, you know what the amount is, and you know how many is over the 24,000. So, if we set it at 30, you could tell us what percentage qualifies.
Again, that would only be people who actually filled out an application.
Right. Up to this point.
If someone called and they asked what qualifications were, and, you know.
We'd have to repurpose it if we change it.
And this might sound a little negative, but I saw it with garbage collection, too. We had to know that there were people in there that were abusing the system, because it's happened in every other element where government subsidizes things. You know there were people that were getting this, where there wasn't a senior in the household, or the senior didn't own, or they were using mom or dad to get the discount, and just, just realize that it happens, and it happens in just a, it happens in everything where government subsidizes. It just does.
I agree with that, and we're not trying to reach a hundred percent.
So, the numbers, there's going to be people that aren't going to send it in, because they, they can't prove it anymore, because they don't have the proof.
Right, I understand, I understand.
You know.
But we're not trying to reach 100%. We're trying to reach about 50. And I'd like to see us reach that 50.
Any other questions?
Good report.
I, well, since we're on that, I'd like for you to come back Tuesday and tell me if it was at 30, how many would have qualified, and how far that number would go.
Right. Again, I would only know that if they actually applied.
Yeah, based on what you've got in hand. You said you kept them, even the ones that were over.
Okay.
Okay.
My gut feeling is, is if you were to raise the limit to 20 to 30 grand, we would not hit 50%.
I don't think we will, yes.
Nope. So, I think you're safe. And I, I'd like, as a matter of process, just to see you tackle that limit and discuss it every month going forward, until either we hit the 50, like the councilman's looking for, or whatever y'all agree to, but that we, you know, it's trial and error. I mean, there's, there's a limit, what, what we know, it's not really a limit. We just don't know.
We're only one.
And the only way we're going to know is to change it a little bit at a time and keep advertising.
And I'm not putting Sarah under any more pressure than she's already in, but I think if she were to provide that number that she had earlier, based on that rationale, that 30,000, maybe this council could look at that Tuesday night.
You might, you might even want to do more than one, 30 and 35, you know, that would give us an idea of, about where we need to be.
I mean, I personally would like to go with this two, two and a half times the poverty rate. Because I think the more you just keep reaching out, the harder it's going to be. We need to do, we need to do this step incrementally, and you've got a lot to do. So-
Thank you. All right, we can move on to the hotel. We can go to the hotel tax ordinance. Next item. So, in December, I'll start talking while she's pulling that up. In December, the council approved the Resource Professionals Group, TRPG, a subcontractor of GMA, to audit our hotels and motels in the city for compliance. So, they've reached out, they've sent letters to each hotel. We have eight locations in town, hotels and motels. They sent letters to tell them what's going on, and then we actually had code compliance, code enforcement deliver packets to them. So, for this next year, they will actually be dealing directly with TRPG. They will send their returns and their money to TRPG, so that they can start, I guess, getting a handle on what's due to us. So, as part of this, TRPG has provided a sample ordinance for us, which will help with the, I think it's even called the Ordinance for Better Collection and Administration of Hotel Motel Tax. So, our ordinances are already addressed some of this, but this is just a more deep-up ordinance, if you want to call it that.
Sarah, is it safe, we've talked about this, but for those that may have forgotten or are watching for the first time, is it safe to us, to say that we have, we have not collected all the monies that were due to us?
I would assume so. I went through a similar audit in Texas, and it did reap, you know, it provided beneficial to us. We definitely had people who were either knowingly or unknowingly not providing all the tax they were supposed to.
I looked through all of that, and it talked about everything that qualifies as a hotel motel, campgrounds, things like that. I'm sorry, but what is a Turkish bath? It was in there. What is it? Anybody know what it is?
What?
Well, we're going to vote, we're voting to pass it, and I just thought, maybe I should know what I was voting.
Are you talking about the ordinance itself?
I had no clue what that was. Yes.
I think in the context of Villarica, Turkish bath would be like in a health club that has a steam room or something like that. We don't have a traditional Turkish bath.
Do people spend the night?
Go on Googling.
Let me, let me point this out, David. When I read through this ordinance, it occurred to me that, under this definition, seems to me that Airbnb would be covered. And I don't really have a problem with that, but I think it should be- but I think it should be at least discussed, if, if there, if there was any desire to, to give that exception, uh, to those folks who, who are renting out bedrooms in their home. Um, or how would we go about enforcing that? Because I'd hate to see us enforce it upon people when we feel like it, not in other cases, because clearly they advertise. We could know exactly who's doing it.
It would be very difficult to enforce against those type of people, and if you do start enforcing that, that's gonna call into question whether or not they're in violation of any of our zoning ordinances also, because if, if they're determined to be a commercial enterprise and are renting out rooms in their house overnight, then.
So, do we wanna provide an exception? Because I would hate to think that we just choose not to enforce something.
Let, let us look around a little bit to see how other places have handled that. I think that's an excellent point that, uh, I didn't think about when I first read it, but we ought to take a look at that to see whether or not it makes sense in Villarica anyway to accept that from the ordinance.
Did you create this ordinance, uh, where?
It was a model ordinance. I didn't draw it up from scratch. I've read, I've read over it, and I thought it was well-written.
And I think by and large, it really is, and, and that's really my only question, but that's gonna also come up with HOAs, um, as well. But the issue with, with these folks is that they advertise online, so it's not like they're hiding, I mean, or even have the ability to hide. I mean, it's right out there in your face. It's sort of like running a taxi cab company right here in Villarica, not going to get a permit for it. We know you're doing it, we see you running around, we see your phone number. Are we just ignoring that? So, I think if we're gonna provide an exception, then provide it. If not, then.
Yeah. I, I think that the, uh, the, the basic premise of hotel motel taxes is not to tax people that are running Airbnb organizations, but we need to figure out, you know, what other jurisdictions are doing.
I hope so.
Ms. Hefty, uh, did I hear you say that they're, these folks are sending the money to the, this group here?
Yes, for a year till the audit is complete.
So, now, let me get this straight. They're taking our money, holding it for a year?
No. They're collecting it for a year, but they'll be paying us regularly.
Oh, okay.
We hired them. We hired them to do this for us. Um, oh, you probably wanted to answer something on the Airbnb.
Well, I was gonna say, because I know the state has been working, only from the, the CVB Association, they've been sending out a lot of legislation. The state really hasn't defined how Airbnb is to be taxed, so they, they, they haven't grasped that concept. It's kinda like internet sales tax. They're still trying to work through that, so they haven't really gotten legislation in place to address how Airbnbs are, are to be addressed. So, right now, they kind of exclude it from the hotel, hotel tax.
It is nice to know that it doesn't apply to jail. I did see that in the ordinance, but, last question, truck stop. How does that play in? It said truck stops was one of the things. I'm thinking, don't they stay for free over there at the truck stop?
Some of them, some of them rent out rooms. I, I don't know if ours does or not.
Okay, okay. All right, so some of.
There is a smokehouse at our truck stop.
But it's not the truck stop itself?
Yeah, it could, it could be, because you pay to keep your truck there overnight, and if you sleep in it, I think that's why the, it's in the language.
Okay.
A motor hotel.
I just thought if I was gonna vote on it, I should understand as much of that legally.
I think that's a great concept.
Okay.
If you, if you're gonna vote on it, you should understand it.
I'm trying, even the Turkish bath.
Truck stop is in there.
Any other questions? All right, moving on.
The Ozarks.
Next are two agreements with our bank, Bank of the Ozarks. This is a security agreement and a custodial agreement. So, in order to keep our money safe, we need to be protected in case of bank failure. So, uh, Bank of the Ozarks pledges securities or investments as collateral for our money. So, um, the, I'm looking at my notes again. The securities that are pledged must hold a market value of at least 110% of our deposits. So, if we have 6 million in the bank, then they have to have 6,600,000 in collateral pledged for our cash. So, another layer of protect, protection, which is the custodial agreement, um, they actually give another bank, First National Bankers Bank, actually has custody of those, um, collateral, so.
So, do you feel totally secure with that setup? I would've sworn that I read something, and it could've been GMA or another government thing, where they recommended using more than one bank, not having all your money. So, do y'all feel like with those protections, we are good, and I'm assuming all our money is there?
Yes.
They're our only bank. So, y'all, y'all feel good about that?
Where'd the security agreement come from? Didn't come from David? Is it?
No, the, the bank provided, both of them.
Yeah, it's a fairly standard security agreement. I, I've read over those for, over a number of years for a number of cities, and it, it's a standard agreement, and, and the reason is, you know, the FDIC protects us up to a couple of hundred thousand dollars, but then.
250, yeah.
But then we're gonna have a lot more money than that in the bank. So, you can either split your money up into a bunch of accounts, which we don't wanna do, because it's hard to administer, or you can make them post collateral, so that if they fail, that you've got some security, that you'll get your money back.
And also, I get a, a monthly report of our collateral, and it's not just one lump sum in one investment. There's pages and pages of different investments that are included in that collateral.
Everything's in their bank.
I'm sorry?
It's always in their bank, everything.
No. It, they just sent me a list of all the different investments, and it's gotta be, like I said, 110% of our deposited money.
This isn't just something you come up with, though, is it? This is federal law, right?
It, is it federal law?
Yep. The collateralization, I think, is federal.
It's federal, and the state law requires also that cities do something to protect their money.
The 110% is a Georgia rule. Um, and like you said, the banks, you, you hear the commercials, FDIC insured up to 250,000. Well, we have a lot more in the, I showed you all, 9 million dollars in the bank, so we have to make sure that all of that is protected.
Very good.
Okay, what's this custodial agreement, service agreement?
That, it goes hand in hand with this, so they are not holding our collateral. They give it to another bank, which is unrelated to them. First.
So, their, this bank's a middleman, huh?
Right.
Correct. So, they have actual custody of the collateral.
Any questions? I have one.
All right. Last month, I brought y'all the write-off, write-offs for over 600 accounts from 2015 to 2017, in the amount of, I think it was over 95,000 for accounts that could not be collected on. And one thing we mentioned was, we, we have the best chance of, um, making the biggest impact on having to write off those amounts through, like we've talked about, the cycle billing change, when we cut off, we're doing that more frequently, but also another thing that we can change is upping our deposit amount. Uh, I think I gave the example. So, our, our deposit right now is 100. So, from that list, I gave y'all 95,000 accounts that needed to be written off. If our deposit had been 200, it would've been, it would cut that in half. So, this is, um, so I'm requesting that we make changes to our deposit amounts, along with some other fees. So, I, I brought you the list.
Hang, hang on just a minute, Sarah.
I was just gonna talk louder.
I used to love.
Amtrak engineer.
I used to love trains.
Next time you see the Amtrak train come through, look and listen. He'll start on one of the seats and go all the way through with a horn.
Okay, the, these deposits on your list are these, you proposed deposits?
Well, that's what I was gonna say. So, the deposits are mostly changing, uh, the fees are not all changing, I think only one of them's actually changing, but I wanted to bring the complete list, so y'all could approve it all at once. So, as you see, the deposits used to be 100 for both owners and renters. Well, now, we're going to separate that. So, owners will pay 125, and a renter would pay 225. Uh, the non-residential, which would be your commercial, we're upping that to 225 as well. So landlords right now do not pay a deposit. They pay a one-time 30 dollar service fee to set up, but we have landlords who stay on, stay on account for a long time, so, uh, by not having a deposit, there's times I can't collect from a landlord, and I can't go cut the tenant off. I need, I need to have, hold a deposit for the landlords in that event, because I have no hold over them as far as cutting water off. The hydrant deposit, 1,250.
Who pays the hydrant deposit? I'm sorry, I don't have a fire hydrant at my house. I mean, who, who's that for?
Contractors.
Yeah, contractors who come in and need water.
Oh, got it, okay.
A lot of times, they get most of it back. Just depends on how much water they use.
Oh, they come in with a meter, connect to our hydrant, and, um, pay for the water they use, and.
Correct.
They, this is a deposit in case they don't pay for the water they use.
Right.
Yeah, they get the meter from us.
Okay, I know we talked about this, and, um, I looked over all these figures, and I'm gonna ask for a little more mercy for renters. I don't know if there's anybody up here that's, you're a renter. You're a renter. It's been eons since I was a renter. I have family members that are. Um, when we bought the house, we did, it was an owner that left the city hundreds of dollars that they didn't pay for in water, and we inherited some of it, because a sprinkler thing had gotten hit and broke, and, and they discounted some of it, and we got the rest of the problem. Um, I understand that it could happen more with renters. You say they're harder to track down. I haven't seen the evidence yet, but when you go to rent, you've gotta pay for, a lot of times, first and last, and deposit this, and deposit on that, which a lot of us don't do all the time. If we could make that a little bit more than the owner, because we are cutting people off a lot sooner, so I'm thinking our new policy is gonna be a great help. It's 100 dollars more than an owner, and that's with a renter who's also usually doing first and last also, that they're putting up, and everything else that they have to connect at that time. Um, people don't use landlines for phone anymore, so that's, that is my plea for.
Oh, yes, we do.
No, no, some people do, but I mean, like, think of renters. I, I bet you there's a lot less renters now that are doing a landline, you know, they're doing like we do with the cellphones, but nonetheless, if they don't, they have that too. So, could we bring, not put it a whole hundred dollars more? See how the new system plays out with the fact that we are cutting people off sooner, so we're gonna, they're not gonna get so far behind?
Council, can I, can I make this suggestion? Because I think staff brought us back what we basically asked, or based on their recommendation. So, when we vote on it next Tuesday, that would be the time, that, you know, if you can get two more people to vote with you, then, then we could change it to whatever you propose.
Actually, this is less than we had asked for. We asked for 250, and she came back, and we went 225, so.
Is that?
I don't remember asking for a particular amount, but I.
Yeah, we, we discussed, we discussed it. Um, so, I'm not trying to cut you off, but, but is that, is that something you would be okay with?
Sure.
Because we can't really vote on it today anyway, so that would be part of the discussion next Tuesday.
I would like to ask Sarah while she's there, is this based on knowledge of personal experience, knowing that renters skip out more than owners do? Just based on your?
Yeah, personal knowledge, yes, and to answer your question about having proof, um, when I went back to the system, there's nothing in our system that tracks whether someone's an owner or a renter, although we ask it on our, um, application. So, we've now added that op, well, not an option, but we've added that feature in our system, so when we're setting up a new customer, it, we can select whether they're an owner or a renter, and my staff's going back as far as they can, looking at actual applications and inputting that information. So, I hope that I, I can have some numbers, um, in the near future to tell you how much, um, how many renters we have versus owners. Um, but yeah, I, I know, um, a lot of times, when we were talking to customers, we were dealing with renters, so.
The city manager has his hand up.
Yeah, one, one thing that may help, help your comfort level with this, um, is, in the case of most of our apartment complexes, and Charlie, I don't know if you know this well enough, or Pete, most of them are on master meters for water. For instance, where I live, so we pay back to the management company, so we don't have an account with Villarica, so we would not pay a deposit. So, like Wildwood, Arbor, Hampton, Hickory Level, where I am, probably, um, Hawthorne.
I've got some.
Probably most of those are master meters, and so that, that's not who we're, who we would be impacting.
It would be the people that live.
Single-family detached rental, and they're, and, and I would add that there's a reason the landlord is getting first and last rent.
It's protection, sure.
Is he's protecting himself because of his experience. The councilman here might could, could add to that, but this is just good business for us, because our, our good, our better-paying people are gonna, are subsidizing this loss.
Okay, which, since the owner of the hotel that you're living in, the most of the apartment complex.
Apartment.
Which one would they fall under here?
They are considered a commercial customer, so the, the apartment complex pays us, and then they bill their individual units, or it's included in their rent, but we have no dealing with the actual.
So, we don't have a deposit for a commercial customer in here?
This non-residential amount?
Is that what it is? 225, okay. That's not much for somebody that's gonna have a huge bill. If he's collecting everybody's bills.
Well, it's hard, because, um, you know, you might have a mom-and-pop commercial compared to like a Chick-fil-A, or, you know, we're, we're talking about two extremes, so, um, unless we started adding different tiers, I didn't wanna hurt the, um.
Yep, the way that you do that is a percent of the bill from the prior occupant.
That's true.
It wouldn't be a fixed amount. You'd calculate it. So, like, if you had, like, let's say, somebody's gonna open up a restaurant in a building where there was a restaurant, you would look back, see what their average bill was, take some percentage of that, like a month or two months, and, and that would be their deposit.
I've seen it done two months, if that's what we want to count.
What we're doing is very, very, very business-friendly in that regard.
Sure is.
Very. And, and doesn't really protect us.
Nope. I would say we don't have too much trouble with commercial, um, the ones that, I guess in the past, we wouldn't even cut off commercial customers that weren't paying. We've changed that, so I don't think I have anybody on the delinquent list now that's a cus, commercial customer.
So, how far out are they out before they would get cut off? Say, if you're a renter.
So, what I asked y'all to approve, I don't know, November or so, was like a three-week period, so they would, could be cut off after three weeks from the due date.
Okay, and what's the average monthly bill for somebody like that?
So.
70? I don't know. Depends on how many people.
Right, with the rate increases, um, it just depends. It could be 90, so.
I mean, I want the city protected, but I also want us to think about low-income people that struggle sometime to get into places and get their household set up.
Any other questions for Sarah? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Tab F, Community Development. Bobby?
Tab ABL-02-18, Alcoholic Beverage License Application for PKR Investments LLC. They're asking for approval to sell retail packaged malt beverages and wine at 205 South Carroll Road, Villarica, Georgia. This is a, the, the small gas station convenience store at the corner of West Wilson and South Carroll. It's been under renovation. They're remodeling inside for some time now. We, um, the applicant has complied with the ordinance regarding legal notification requirements. Background check has been conducted by our police department, and there are no location restrictions that would hinder the issuance of the license. Uh, staff recommends approval on it, and the applicant will be here at Tuesday night's meeting.
Bobby, is this the new owner?
Yes.
And previously, this store was called, uh, Carroll Road Shop Ed. Does it have a new name?
Uh, I noticed the sign today when I was out there, still got the old sign up. I'm not sure what they're gonna do.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions? Item two. And for disclosure purposes, I would like to state that I do own property three houses down from this one, so...
Thought you were out there somewhere.
Mr. Mayor, we have a rezoning application, number 05-18, to rezone the property located at 78 Harold Road, Villarica, Georgia. William K., Sally D., and Sandy Williams request rezoning for the property at 78 Harold Road, which is parcel number V04-012-0049, Land Lot 193, 6th District, Carroll County, from an R20, single-family residential to office-institutional ONI. The property consists of 0.73 plus or minus acres. It's located in Ward 3. Staff did the research on it. Future land use map calls for commercial. Let me find that. I've got it underlined. Commercial, public, institutional, and low-density residential. So, it is consistent with that. I think the lot right next door on the south side of this lot has already been zoned ONI. They don't have any immediate plans to build, but he's just trying to get it zoned and get prepared for that. Planning Commission voted to approve with the permitted use is limited to business, medical, dental, and professional offices. And per the UDC, all improvements installed on the property prior to occupancy. And to be sure, the parking requirements are adhered to as far as what the UDC calls for.
Were there any residents for or against this?
No opposition at all. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions?
Uh, yeah, you say the one to the east of this piece of property. I see a house on it. No, it's undeveloped. The two lots over's got a house on it.
If you're looking at your map, the lot right next door to it down has already been zoned ONI.
You said there was no opposition. Were there any proponents?
No. We had nobody...
Nobody showed up.
Nobody seemed to speak. Property was duly advertised and posted as well.
Know somebody that lives over there, I'll ask them.
Okay, the one... The two... One of the boats of lots to the east of this piece of property. You said one of them is ONI?
One of them is ONI already, yes.
Okay, what's the one with the house on it?
Probably single, R20.
Still R20?
But even that one next door to it, future land use map calls for it to go either commercial, public, institutional, or to stay that residential.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mekley?
Sir?
If we change this, how long do they have to comply with it?
To comply? Now, what I heard...
I'm trying to understand the question.
What I heard Mr. Elliott say was that they want it changed, but they were not sure when they would start or do anything with it. Is that correct? How long would they have to do something with it?
Reverse.
If you change the zoning, it's just rezoned and it would be forever.
Okay.
So, we'll make sure... Until you change it back. I mean, sometimes people will put conditions on rezoning to say if you don't, you know, if you don't move forward with your project within X period of time, that it will revert back to its previous zoning. I don't know that that would be necessary in something like this. This is changing to a zoning that is probably eventually going to be anyone.
Did the planning and zoning put any conditions on this one?
Not on the time limit of developing, no sir.
Okay.
Item three?
Mr. Mayor, we have rezoning application 04-17. This is an application by David Wiley of Dallas, Georgia, to request rezoning of the property at 1030 Third Street, Villarica, Georgia, from an R20 to a limited industrial. This is the case that was tabled at last month's meeting. The applicant is here. I don't tend to speak for him, but he came back in and we discussed the application a couple of days ago. And the planning commission put some stipulations on this. And if you've got your recommend... Under staff recommendations, those are exactly what the planning commission agreed to. The first one is a permitting use limited to equipment, material, and supply storage. He has... There's been a change in... I don't wanna speak for him, but there's been a change in his situation where his current equipment is being stored. He's got an opportunity to purchase that particular tract. And his intent for this project is to develop it consistent with the UDC in the limited industrial, if he can get the zoning. And I think he can speak for himself, but I think he's pretty much okay with the other stipulations. The buffer requirements and all that were listed here, the code requires it anyway. Whatever he decides to do on that. So, he's here if you...
Bobby, if he's making a change on his application, did this go back to planning and zoning?
It has not. That's my issue. Do we need it to go back to planning commission?
It seems to me that if he's making a change in his application, that it should've gone back before planning and zoning and have them come back with a recommendation consistent with, you know, it having changed.
Yeah, I would agree that if it is a significant change, sometimes people will make a very small technical change. It probably doesn't need to go back, but if it's for a different type of use than what it was originally considered by the planning commission, I agree. I think it does need to go back.
And it would also have to be re-advertised, correct?
Yes. Not to speak for our attorney.
Yeah, I mean, this is, as I understand it, it's a significant change from what was presented to the planning commission and to the council. You can tell me if you disagree that it's a significant change, but it seems to be, and I would think therefore it needs to just be fully considered. Give the public an opportunity to have their say-so on it.
So, I think it needs to come off our agenda for Tuesday and...
I think there was a purpose change and therefore I do think... I think it needs to come off.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bobby.
Just a comment real quick and actually related to the other zoning on the Harold Road. I think there's something wrong on the cover sheet on that one because it lists the address of Harold Road and then it references Third Street.
Yeah, I did notice that, yeah.
Yeah. On background, it's the cover sheet for seventy... You see it?
Yes.
Okay. That's the other one, right? Okay. You know what I'm talking about.
Cut and paste to get you in trouble every time.
I was just thinking it was something like that.
Tab G, Vicki?
Mayor, Council, the item that is before you, this is related to the Fullville Trailhead. As you know, we completed construction on the project in August of 2017. Most of the closeout has been done to get approval on the final reimbursement. What you have before you is a supplemental agreement from Georgia Department of Transportation. And so, approval of this supplemental agreement will allow them to give us our final reimbursement. To date, we have been reimbursed $451,057.21 of the original $500,000 grant. So, the remaining portion to be reimbursed is $48,942.79. So, staff recommendation is approval of the final supplemental grant... I mean, supplemental agreement.
I have no problem with us asking for the rest of the money from them, which is basically what we're doing. I had one question and it was this. It was estimated that it would cost $625,000. The grant amount was $500,000. But it kept using the term estimate in what I was reading. City cost 125. So, okay, now the grant is not an estimate. That's their max amount they're gonna give. What I'd like to know is, in the end, what did the city pay? Because we had an estimate that it had to be matched with $125,000. Is that right? Do I have that right?
Yes, the...
But is that our final number? What was our final number? What did the city put into this?
Our...
That's all I wanna know.
Our final cost total on all of the construction together came to the $625,000. We had to... We had a couple of things come up and we had to go in and break the project back out. So, with construction and construction administration and the utility conflict that we had, we ended up paying $625,000.
Councilmember, was your question how much the city's cost was or the total cost of the project?
The total, I knew the $500,000 and they're giving us all of that. This'll be the final invoice we send in and we'll get that. Yeah, I just wanted to know what the city ended up with. And it sounds like $125,000. $500,000 plus $125,000 would be $625,000.
$625,000 is what we ended up paying altogether.
Right.
And we're getting $500 back.
Correct.
Right.
So, the $125.
So, the estimate was not just an estimate, that was the true cost. That's all I need to know.
Any other questions? Item two?
This second item that is before you, this is part of the July 3 fireworks. This is the annual fireworks display contractor recommendation. The city put out its invitation to bid. As usual, we received two bid responses back. Staff is making a recommendation of the approval of East Coast Pyrotechnics. If you open up your packet, what you have in there is essentially the bid summary of both of the respondents, just summarizing total shell sizes and the total larger shell sizes of what was included in their responses. The total amount is a budgeted item and it's a total for $23,000.
Is this the same company that did it last year?
Correct.
No question.
They've done a great job every year.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. I do have a question about July 3, but I'm gonna wait until after your last one, which is the entertainment, item number three.
Sure. The... What you have, this final item, is the band that's going to perform at the July 3. This is staff recommendation. This is the departure band. Many of you, or for those of you that attended the Nugget Drop concert, very cold evening, but it was a great band that performed. And I think some of the comments that we heard was, hey, is there an opportunity to bring them back where people can actually enjoy the show? So, what you have before you is their contract. Again, $4,500. And this is essentially, we've gone in, just if you've had a chance to go through, we've pretty much mirrored the exact same thing as what was requested at the Nugget Drop. So, the contract is included as well as the rider. And you can see where we've gone in and we struck through the things, the very similar things that were addressed.
I just wanna say with this particular contract, these seem to be the most reasonable folks too, of these contracts that we get. Not only do I really like them, but, you know, and I had that experience after New Year's, but I like their contract. I mean, their contract just seems to be very reasonable.
They must be close because they didn't require rooms. So, this is a truer cost.
Yes.
The band cost is truer because there's not a whole bunch of stuff in the rider.
So, I don't have any questions.
Any questions on the band?
Nope.
Okay. The question I have, I have received two concerns from local vendors about the fees that are charged, you know, to be, to set up on the field on July 3. How much does it cost a vendor to set up?
I'd have to go back and pull it. I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head, but there is a break... It does break it up according to, you know, what exactly your needs are. There may be some that may require electricity. I think that may be some of it. We have a flat fee and then there was a percentage that was included in there as well, but I'd have to...
Okay, let me tell you what that number is. It's $150 plus 10% of the net. Now, anybody that owns businesses out there knows that that's pretty steep. Now, if you're asking for 10% of the gross, first of all, you're asking for somebody to be honest with you. And the person that called and told me this, you can pretty much figure out, he's gonna tell me the truth. But most businesses that have a 20% profit margin are pretty select. So, if they're paying $150 just to be there and then 10% of the net, they're not gonna make any money. My concern with that is that at some point, what we do as far as vendors out there is concerned is a service in addition to trying to recover money. If you make this... If the department or the city makes this too expensive for vendors to set up, you're not gonna have anybody that comes out and serves or provides cokes and soft drinks and hot dogs and all the other things that go along with that. I would just ask Tom that y'all look at that number because that seems a little steep to me. The $150, I don't think in and of itself is a problem, but when you start asking for $150 plus 10% of the net that they make, I don't know how you're gonna monitor that, quite frankly, but to me, that just seems a little high.
Especially if their profit margin is slim. I will say this, but I don't know if it was related to this. We've had... Seems to me, just as an attendee, we had less vendors. I mean, I remember the barbecue place wasn't there. Seemed like there were less places to eat at. Now, I don't know if it's related to this, but I imagine they have a whole lot of places they can choose to go to and they wanna go where they're gonna make good money. And we have a good crowd, so they should do good, I would think, at our event. I try to come hungry.
Well, if this particular vendor, one of the ones that can't make money, nobody can 'cause it's Chick-fil-A. So, I mean, think about it. I mean, if Chick-fil-A is saying, look, you know, we'd love to be there and be a part of your celebration, but we can't afford to be there because we can't pay all our folks to service that and do what they have to do and, you know, run back and forth with thousands of sandwiches and make money. So, I would just hate to know that we all show up on July 3 with departures, our band, a great fireworks show, and we don't have any soft drinks for, you know, hopefully. How many vendors do you have?
Vicki, does that sound correct? That you said a minute ago you didn't know, you would have to check, but does it sound correct that it's $150 per vendor and 10% of their net?
That sounds about right. I think, you know, the biggest question before, you know, I recall going back between the gross and the net, it was, okay, let us pay our people out first, which is how we came to, you know, the conversation of the net. So, you will cover all of your expenses technically. And granted, you're not always going to know, but one of the things that, when we had a conversation, it wasn't last year, I wanna say it was the year before, it was you can compare by those vendors, particularly like the food vendors, like who's doing what. If staff is there, we can kinda see the lines and see who's generating what. And, you know, one of the recommendations that came from one of the vendors is, like, you can solve a lot of problems when the vendor that you can tell may be underreporting, it just may be a situation where they don't get to come back next year. You know, if you've had everyone that may have done, say, I'm just gonna throw out a number, like $3,000, but you happen to come up in your 500, and it seems very unreasonable when, again, you had the same lines as everyone else.
Let me say right off the bat, I thought that number was 30%, but either way, I'd like to get to a place where we're probably not even looking at this percent. But I do think it's fair to look at the numbers. What does this cost us? What do we bring in from these vendors? If we could see that, can we... I imagine you don't know off the top of your head, but can we do away with that percentage and still do okay on this fireworks?
I would say that we'd still probably be looking at increasing the number a little bit. We do keep the numbers that we have from every single vendor. We can tell you what all of our costs and what we spend out in terms of, you know, the performance, the, you know, fireworks and all that other stuff. So, we can sit down and we can certainly look at it a little bit more closely, but, you know, to what extent we want to recover all of our costs or, you know, a portion of it is the conversation that certainly we can have and we can look at.
How many vent... I'm sorry.
I think we should look at the whole picture when we do that, but I attend that event and I want as many people as can, as there are selections and choices out there, but I wanna make a good business decision for the city as well. But I can tell you, not so much last year, but the year before, there were a number of complaints about... And I believe that percentage must've been 30% before because I can tell you, I've ran businesses like that, like those that are out there. That's a huge number. And I think at that time, we were talking about a gross number, so I was not only relieved to hear that we're talking about a net number, but we're talking about 10%. I think I'd like to get to where we don't have any percent at all.
I agree.
But I'd like to see the numbers.
Just a flat fee for us to look in...
I think that would be... I think I'd be happier with it. I think that the vendors would be happier with it too.
What about getting some feedback back from the vendors? I mean, I know lobbyist has a bad name, but down at the Capitol, the reason some lobbyists go down there, the dental, you know, network or whatever, is they're saying, this is how you're going to affect our business if you do such and such. It might be helpful if at the end of the event, you know, we ask them to complete a survey and give feedback 'cause heck, fine, no, I don't set up there and sell things. So, we need to feed, you know, hear back from the people that actually do it on how it's working for them too.
Well, they do let us know. Trust me, I can promise you.
It could actually be a formal process other than just calling or emailing. It could actually be a formal process, other than just calling or email. We could actually have where, hey, we want a response from you guys, we accumulated, it's all put together, and it's not just me telling you about the call I got. It's all laid out for us. Anyway, just, just an idea.
Well, but a couple, a couple of points. I like the idea of just charging a flat fee because then you're not looking at lines to try to figure out, you know, what a person's gross or their net is. How many vendors did you have on the field out there last year? Food vendors?
I've really, I can bring that information to you.
How much money did you bring in in revenue?
I'd have to go back and look at the numbers.
And the reason I ask you those questions is because, you know, I wanna make the point that, again, I'm all for trying to recover some of the cost and make a good business decision, but there's a point we have to say, you know, we also need to provide a service because having grown up on ball fields, somebody always ran the concession stand. I really didn't care who did when I was, when I was playing, but it was always nice to have a hamburger or a hot dog and a coke at the end of the day. So I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that these vendors provide a service for us. So if we recover some of that cost, that's great, but I'm not saying we should try to, these are my, these are my words, stick it to these folks to the point where they just all walk away and we don't have anybody providing concessions. That's my, my point.
So let me just ask, so I understand, do you see a difference between the, say, the food vendors and the, what, how many you may describe, like the inflatables and the carnival type rides?
I do see a difference in the two because one's more of a service than the other. You don't necessarily have to drive, you know, ride down or get on the, in the jumpy house, but, you know, if you're out there and it's 100 degrees on that ball field and you're looking for something to drink, you know, that becomes...
You don't have to stand in line for 45.
That becomes a necessity.
Only one person selling.
Like restrooms. We don't charge anything.
Do you have a structure for that? Do you charge something different for those?
It's...
Okay, well, I'm not getting into that. I, I'm only talking about these food vendors and the 10%.
Okay. That helps me though.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm really focused on.
Okay.
But of course, the more information we have, I guess, you know, doesn't hurt.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Tab H, Public Works, Pete.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
My item is seeking your consent for emergency replacement of variable frequency drive that controls the number two aeration motor that's in our aeration basin at the west wastewater We had a power surge back in February 19th toward the end of the day that took that unit out, and this is a very critical component of our operation. It actually helps entrain oxygen into the process, and since we do have a biological process, they need oxygen to, to function properly and respirate. So this was something that we had to be in a hurry about to replace. If we lost the bug population at the plant, then we've got a serious problem and we would be out of compliance and have to do some other serious things to restart the process. Ironically, we had to replace the number one aerator about a year ago, and the people that, that we called in to do the work are the same ones that we called in here, PRB Electronics. And we're recommending that you approve the work that they completed to replace the VFD on the number two aeration basin in the, the amount of $14,075.71.
So there was no other, no other company to do this kind of work? We were stuck with one, one company?
Well, they've done quite a bit of work, both in our wastewater side of things, especially the, the west plant, because we had so many failures in the last couple of years. The old drive units there were Siemens and they've been very problematic. When the number one aerator went down, we used them to replace that unit. And so they're, they're out of Douglasville, they're close by, they're very familiar with our system, and so we, we asked them to come in to do the number two unit, which they responded to very quickly. And the price on this unit was very comparable to what they replaced on the number one aerator a year ago.
Questions?
I got two.
Yes.
Did we get the work done fast enough to save the bugs?
Yes.
And the second question is, what are we gonna do now that we know there's a systemic problem to prevent the surges? 'Cause it looks like this is just gonna happen again. Looks like we either have a design issue or an installation issue. So that's not, that's sort of rhetorical, so that's on y'all.
Yeah, and, and we definitely have, are gonna be looking into that. I mean, one thing that's inherent in water and wastewater plants is that they are prone to electrical strikes or spikes in electricity. A lot of this equipment, because of the cost of it, is extremely sophisticated electronics. So we need to go through everything. We've been trying to do that since I've been here and we need to harden our system a lot better than it is, yeah.
And suffice it to say, there is no redundancy in that system?
No, this particular one, this, this did not operate in a lead-lag kinda thing, where one's on and then it rests and the other one comes on. These are simultaneous, yeah.
So you are gonna come up with a solution to prevent this in the future since...
Well, there are gonna be some time, yes, we're gonna look into hardening the system to make sure that we can prevent it if possible, but, you know, to say it'd be 100% safeguard against electrical hits on this stuff, I don't know if I can make that claim.
So this is a known problem with these, with these facilities, and this is a $32 million plant that doesn't have a surge protection?
Well, I think there's some surge protection throughout the system. It's just, for some reason, this particular unit failed and I, I don't know exactly why. Well, it's another one that failed, yeah. No Siemens.
We got a problem.
We do.
Okay.
So are we thinking lightening? Do we know?
I don't think, I don't think I know. Do you know, Dean?
No, it was, uh... It occurred on that, that Monday, which was President's Day, we were off, but it was 3:30ish afternoon when they started. As I recall, it was a bluebird kinda day, it was a nice day. We get glitches, it's either a surge or a glitch where there's no generation power out there. We've got dual feeds feeding that plant, so when one glitches, a squirrel jumps on the line or limb falls on it, who knows what happens. The other lag, their lead, will pick up and take over. When that switch occurs, there's a surge or, and those drives don't like to be automatically stopped and then tried to restart, and I think that's, and Siemens drives tend to be more, since the ones that have been replaced with the Esk ours, we haven't had issues with, they restart automatically. So it, there are a lot of little things that I think need to be looked into and checked into. I think there needs to maybe be an electrical engineer come out and trace some issues, but the ones that have been replaced with the Esk hour drives have not been an issue in the last year, so.
Other questions?
$14,000 a year is not gonna do it. Need to, need to make sure we're looking at whatever we need to do out there to prevent this if it's prevented.
Bottom line, mishap, you just pay the bill.
Is that the bottom line?
This one.
Yeah, but if they don't get it fixed in time, we got a problem.
Mm-hmm. Nice, but don't do it.
Um, I, Police Department? Chief?
Mr. Beckman said he wasn't gonna listen to me, he was leaving. Hurts my feelings. So the first thing I, I had that I wanted to discuss briefly is, we had previously changed the fine on the railroad crossing violations, and the original plan was to make it for these trucks that gets stuck on the tracks, that we would charge them under the code section 40-6-140F, which would be a totally separate fine because of all the work we have to put into getting them off the track and all, and that fine, we wanted raised to $1,000. Somehow or another, we raised all of the railroad crossing violations to $1,000, and so if Little Miss Jones is going across railroad and gets caught, then her fines $1,000, just like everybody else's. So what has happened though is we've made those cases go in front of the solicitor, the solicitors helped them out, reduced the fine, you know, without a problem, but what we're doing here is trying to make it to where it's only for that one violation, not all the violations.
That makes sense to me, 'cause that's what the intent was, and that was done, so...
Exactly.
Any other questions? Comments?
Get off light, chief.
He ain't through yet.
Item two?
Item two is the peddler's permit. I hate to do it. We're doing identification, or doing permits for Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Shriners, all of these folks. We don't charge them for the permits. It's a lot of extra work that I'm not sure is necessary because these people are already background, they have the background checked already with their organizations before they're able to come out and solicit. So I'm trying to take a little bit of work off of our staff in that they don't have to do these permits for specific organizations that you guys name, and we would come up with a recommendation.
You're talking about the organizations and not the people that actually do the work?
Say that again.
I said you're talking about the organization, but not the people that actually go out and do the work.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the people that actually go out and do the work because they come in individually and, you know, four people from Girl Scout troop 12, 14 comes in, we do their permits for them. Each individual, they all have to be backgrounded and everything. So what I'm asking is, their bylaws require them to have background checks before they can do any work with these clubs or these groups. We're just duplicating that service by doing it. I would like for us not to have to do it for specific groups that you decide, and we would make recommendations.
Do we charge a fee for this?
Sir?
Do we charge a fee for this?
No, sir. There's no fee at all.
Okay. You don't have a cut in here with a motion?
No, sir, I don't yet.
I wanna put that in there.
This was for discussion. I didn't, I didn't have anything ready for presentation yet, but I wanted it on the board just so you guys would know about it, that we would like to talk about it.
Chief, I understand why you're doing this, but, but my, my problem potentially is that, you know, we're assuming that the Boy Scouts of America and the Shriners do background checks, but there are other people that make application too. How are you gonna discern or determine who, who has done a background check and who hadn't?
Well, if they're not with the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, or whatever, we're gonna check and we're gonna see if they have a permit. If they don't have a permit, we're gonna, we're gonna make them get a permit and do a background check. But the, these, these groups, part of their bylaws is that if they do solicitation for these groups or they work with these kids, they have to have a background already.
Okay, can you get that information?
I will, before Tuesday.
Now, what I'm saying is, if they've gotten a background check, then whoever did the background check should be able to verify that. That way we would make sure this is...
I won't be able to get that. They won't allow us to have that. That will be part of them...
We're gonna be taking their word for it, that these people that are doing this listing are, have been...
Well, we're, we're taking the, the word for the group, the clubs, certain clubs, so...
You gonna give us, you gonna make the list out of those clubs?
I would, I would love your help, but yes, sir.
Well, what I'm saying is, there are, there are clubs out there...
Yes, sir.
...that do that.
Right. If it's not part of their bylaws, we won't, we won't include them. We'll make sure it's part of their bylaws before we include them.
I like that. Now, let me ask you one last question.
Okay.
How about yard sales?
I'd love to have one, but I'm kinda at this meeting right now. What, what about yard sales, sir?
Are they not supposed to come through here to get a permit for?
They do get a permit, it's a $2 fee.
$2?
Yes, sir.
It ain't worth the time to open the door.
Right, I'd like to see it be zero.
No. No, we got so many yard sales in this town, it's unreal, and I'm gonna have one myself. But it needs to be an amount...
$10.
A $10 fee.
Seven dollars one ton or something.
I, I don't know, but it's 10, 25, it doesn't matter.
No, no, no. We don't wanna do 25. Come on, guys. Sometimes we get a little bit too much government now.
What I'm trying to say is that there was a way to stop all the yard sales and a way to stop them.
Why do we wanna stop yard sales?
Well, every weekend, starting about the 1st of April to all the way to, to October, how many yard sales you have in this city?
From when to when?
1st of April to 1st of October.
Forty-seven at last count.
Well, that's each month.
But now, this one lady had two, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's each month. So, now, I do, I do think it needs to be more than $2, but also we do have a restriction on how many they can have at, at each house, which is two per year.
You're gonna come to us with a written proposal and information so that we can make an informed decision, correct?
On the scouts.
On, on the, how, 'cause we have no, there is no agenda item, so this is, we're just discussing it, so I'm assuming you're gonna, right, so you're gonna bring something in a format that we can look at and...
Peddler.
What's your proposal?
Feathers.
Yes, on what I, oh, yes, sir, I will.
Your discussion item.
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted the, the...
I just disregarded what he said, to be honest with you.
Oh, he's coming back.
I can't say, I can't say that, sir, but okay.
He's coming back, don't worry about it.
The, the last thing is just the agreement between the City of Billerica Court with the public defender. We've had this before, where we've had it in a contract form, but we haven't done it the last one or two, and that's on me, that's my fault, but we are wanting to do it again with the newest person that will be taking over in March.
Okay. This is where we get the benefit or the downfall of sending the mayor to GMA training. There are certain things, requirements, as far as a public defender's concerned, who they report to. Would you make sure that those things are in compliance and get with David on that so that we can...
Yes, sir.
If you have it, I don't know if it's online now or not, I don't know if it was for a while, Gil, about post-Ferguson law, that, that's where this came up and...
I didn't hear what you said.
Post-Ferguson, when, when all that happened, a lot of laws, a lot of things that they, that the City of Ferguson did were found to be wrong...
Right.
...and were changed after that, and specifically as they relate to public defenders and municipal court judges and chiefs and...
And our judge, and, and our judge does go to training, so he comes back and lets us know anything that's changed that we have to do different, but we'll make sure...
Would you check on that?
Yes, sir.
It's, it's called municipal law, post-Ferguson. This handout that you just gave, I don't see it on the...
This was the one that he added.
I just added this one. Earlier in the meeting, y'all said y'all would let me discuss it.
Probably talking about yard sales. I don't, I didn't write it on my sheet over here, so I'll take a look at it. Thank you.
Yes.
Right.
That's all.
Any other questions? Thank you, chief. Okay, we have reached the public comments portion of our meeting. Anyone wishing to give public comment, please do so at this time. Please state your name and address for the record and limits your comments to three minutes. Listen up, don't comment.
Mr. Mayor, my name's David Wiley, I'm from Dallas, Georgia. I apologize that I didn't hear good when the council was discussing my issue earlier about getting piece of property zoned. I left here and I decided I've lost an opportunity to put my business in Billerica, 'cause I've been working on this since November. Before Mr. Bobby came along, Bobby's tried to help me, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate all y'all's consideration. But a deal came up, caused me to keep my business where it's at. I decided to go ahead and proceed on with zoning this property and developing it. Everybody in your city that has anything to do with the work of this city tells me that this... that this city is business friendly. Now, here we are in March and I'll be sometime in April before I get to come before this board and have y'all vote on me. Because all, because all I decided to do was not put my yard there. But I can tell y'all one thing, I'm gonna tell you from, probably from a little frustration because of whatever, and I still don't understand the whole reason because I don't hear good. I've made that plane from day one. But I understand, and I'm not pointing a finger at anybody in particular, but I understand what Donald Trump talks about when he talks about draining the swamp. Because here I am, four months, and I've still gotta come back before this board again. It's frustrating. I've got business people that want businesses. I've discussed this with, with council members personally. How many business people are gonna wait on the city and the council to decide what they're gonna do on zoning a piece of property for me? And the question is, am I gonna keep messing around? Now, if this city wants more industry in here, y'all need to start acting like it. Now, I appreciate your concern, I appreciate you giving me the time to speak. I want y'all to know, I don't appreciate four months of being postponed and I still gotta go again and I still don't know what y'all gonna tell me in April. So appreciate it, maybe y'all need to consider this for the next man that comes along and wants to do some zoning. All I wanna do is help the city. Wanna make a few dollars just like everybody else does. I'm not gonna lie, I mean, this is not all about me doing something for the city. Started out for me to move my business here and then it turned into more development. And I have, I have been questioned, I've been badgered about this from day one and I'm getting a little, I'm getting a little tired of fighting against the swamp, as Mr. Trump would say. So wherever the swamp's coming from, maybe y'all need to consider trying to find out where it needs to be cleaned up and I appreciate your consideration and y'all have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting and we'll talk about our consent agenda. Head event at the mill, tab D2, because I know we're gonna talk about the maintenance course.
No, that's not gonna be on the consent agenda.
No, but I mean, I need somebody to say something, I'm just not gonna figure it out on my own. All right. We will have, Councilman McDougal, you will have that. Okay, so item three will be discussed as it's written, however the number happens to come out. Tab E, finance, of course, Sarah will get to do her thing.
Just a second, those ones, those items that you added, do you want to discuss those?
Um, yeah, but they won't be consent, we'll just put them under.
But I'm for the agenda, she's also gonna make the agenda out of what we say here.
Yeah, I'll get with you on, on those items. And I wrote down the others too, that, a couple others that were added. Okay, E2, ordinance for better collection of administration and hotel motel tax, we need to discuss that, in my opinion. Bank of the Ozarks?
Consent.
Yeah.
I don't hear a no, we're gonna do consent. Update fees and deposit amounts on utility billing?
Yep.
Tom's second has said no.
This met first, I wanted to talk about those.
Okay, so that will not be on consent agenda. Okay, tab F1, of course, will not. Tab F2, will not.
If three comes off.
Three comes off, it goes back to back.
Yep. Three comes off. Tab G1, full rail trailhead.
Consent.
Number two?
Consent.
Number three?
Consent.
Tab H1?
Consent.
Yep. It's already been done.
Police Department, railroad fines?
Consent.
Number two, discussion of peddler's permits. We're gonna have, you're gonna have something for that. Item number three, public defender, you're gonna have us something.
Yeah.
All right. So anything else that I have missed? I've got a hot mess, we'll just pay for over here.
I don't think you have anything else.
No, I don't think so. Okay, so the items that I have are tab E3, tab F3 will be removed, tab G1, G2, G3, H1, and I1. Anybody see any difference?
That's what I got.
Okay. There's some controversy whether we adjourn these meetings, but I believe we're supposed to, so do I hear motion, we adjourn?
We can't vote, so just adjourn the meeting.
There's two different points of view on that, by the way.
Right. That's what the attorney says, we can't vote in the work session. That was the call meeting, we should've, we should've adjourned the call, we did adjourn it.
We did.